Ladies and gentlemen, good evening and welcome to tonight's city council meeting. This meeting is called to order. I kindly ask our city clerk to please take the roll call.
Mike Bruno.
Here.
Tara Burkhart.
Here.
Mike Clements.
Here.
Becky Ruby.
Here.
Dean Kilburg.
Here.
Craig Malagra.
Here.
Richard Marx.
Here.
Jean McGowan. Jim Rodecky.
Here.
Robert Swanson.
Here.
Folks, we begin our city council meetings with the pledge of allegiance. I'd like to ask distinguished guest Winnie Frankel to please lead us in the pledge. Thank you Winnie. In addition to Ms. Frankel, we have some very distinguished guests with us this evening to honor a man that I think we all know, certainly I do, growing up on WGN, the superstation, watching Bozo. Someone said to me earlier, "Oh my god, you've got another clown besides all of you in the room tonight." But, I want to begin by showing just a brief clip of a gentleman we all grew up with, we all admire, we all respect, and we all love, so without further ado, folks, a little bit of nostalgia from our friend Marshall Brodean.
Hi, I'm Marshall Brodean. You know, most magic tricks are easy, once you know the secret. Like this one, stuff any handkerchief in your hand, and with the magic vanisher, presto, you made it disappear. Now take this empty tube, drop the glass through to convince everyone that it's really empty, pour some water into the tube, but look, it doesn't go through. Cover it with any handkerchief, push it through with a pencil, and what happened to the water? Here it is, back inside the glass. Those are just some of the 15 tricks you will find in this TV magic set. Yes, now you can put on your own TV magic show and have hours of fun entertaining your friends. The TV magic set comes with all the equipment and instructions for 15 tricks, plus a complete deck of cards and instructions for 25 card tricks, and a book of 102 other magic tricks you can learn to do.
Get TV magic sets only $4.99, available at all Thrifty Drug and Discount Stores.
You know ironically, we're actually discussing Thrifty drugstores tonight. No, we're not. If, no one objects, I'd like to, and if Mrs. Brodean would be so kind, I'd like to invite you up to the podium if I may. Ladies and gentlemen, Mary Doyle Brodean. Now, Mrs. Brodean, rumor has it, there were a lot of those things sold.
Well, a lot more than I think said than there was, but, you know, things got bigger through time because, you know, Marshall had Alzheimer's disease, so his stories always got grander as the years went by.
That's awesome. And of course, I think most of us have seen the museum that was in the basement of your beautiful home in Eaglebrook. In fact, just earlier today, I watched the piece from WGN when they had a tour of that.
That's a lot of fun.
Extraordinary, extraordinary.
Marshall moved to Geneva in 1995 when we got married.
Right.
I had already been in Geneva, and the first nine years that he was here, he traveled a lot and worked a lot, so he wasn't home all that much, but once the Alzheimer's set in, we took a walk every day, because I had to keep that man on the move busy, and Geneva offered us the perfect setting. It was such a beautiful town.
Wonderful.
I mean, I'm really grateful to all of you who worked so hard to make our city beautiful and safe, because it offered us so much to do during those days. You know, I had him at home for 10 years.
Right.
So, those were pretty rough years, but the walks, I really cherished, because when you walk with someone with Alzheimer's, they don't have to remember anything. You know, it's not like they have to follow your conversation, or remember what they did five minutes ago, you could just comment on what you're seeing, and Geneva offers so much for us to see.
You talk about your, the challenges.
Yes.
You are an accomplished author, many times over. I know a book that you wrote regarding your challenges with Marshall.
Yes.
Won an Illumination Award, I believe, in 2017.
Thank you.
Would you care to share with everyone tuning in and everyone here, the name of that book and what it's about?
It's "Navigating Alzheimer's," and it's how caregivers can get through caring for a loved one, especially for family caregivers. It's a 24/7, very intense, relentless disease to care for, because the person that has the disease is typically up all night, all day, and you have to be on. So, for those 10 years, most of that time, I didn't sleep at night. It was kind of napping on and off, and by the time I moved Marshall to a home for memory care, I was 90 pounds, had pneumonia in both lungs, pleurisy, it took me two years to recover from that. And, you know, he's, today, he's doing well, considering, he's going to be 84 tomorrow, and has had Alzheimer's at least 14, 15 years. That's the symptoms. He probably had it in the brain 20 years before that, so he probably had it when we got married. And, you know, he's happy, still tries to do his magic, he'll do a little trick, and you know, it's remarkable, as people with Alzheimer's that watch him do the magic, now remember, he's not completing a trick, they laugh. They know he's being entertaining, and they totally appreciate his humor, even though he didn't really tell a joke, it's just his attitude, so he still has that air about him that's fun and entertaining, and his audiences get it, no matter who they are.
That's wonderful. That's wonderful. Is the word legacy too dramatic a word?
I don't think so. I think, you know, he's a Chicago icon, for sure.
The stories are unbelievable.
Yes, he's had...
Those are...
Some remarkable stories.
Remarkable stories.
Yes.
Now, I read one article where he performed at a lounge in Cicero, and one of the frequent guests, shall we say, belonged to a group that none of us want to belong to, and demanded that Marshall show him how he did the trick. But he never told, did he?
Well, only until the gun came out.
I wasn't going to mention that, but...
Yes.
Yeah, pretty interesting, huh? And of course, his appearances on Bozo Circus.
Yes.
And all that fun stuff. I had the honor of working with Al Hall, who produced the Bozo Show, for years, and in fact, had the opportunity to work with your husband when we produced the Jerry Lewis Labor Day telethon at WGN Studios.
He drove Al crazy.
Yes, he did.
Yes, he did.
Yes, I can still hear Al using colorful language about it, yes.
Yes.
There's some very adult humor on the Bozo Show when Wizzo appeared.
Yes.
And I think it went over every kid's head.
Let's hope so.
Yeah, unless, but when you watch the YouTube now, it's like, oh my.
Yes.
Oh my, so, comments or questions from the dais for Mrs. Brodean? You have some special guests with you this evening.
I do. I have my stepson, Marshall Jr., and he's a fabulous son, he sees his dad all the time, all through the years, he's consistently there for him. This is our wacky the wizard.
Wizzo!
Yes, Tom Holbrook, and this is his friend Larry, right?
Larry, I think.
Larry, yeah. And Ken Mate, our comedian magician friend, a very close friend of Marshall, also sees him consistently, very, very good to us. And our friend Doug McKnight, who's always been there for us, too.
Now, a little story about Doug, he arrived here at 5 o'clock this evening.
Oh, he's very...
So, we had several police officers over here wondering what he was doing so early.
He came for dinner.
Yeah, isn't that something? Now Ken, come on up to the podium, you're a Batavia guy.
A suburb of Geneva.
If my memory's correct, you appeared on the Bozo Show some 42 times?
Forty-two times. Marshall first put me on there in 1975, on behalf of the Marshall Brodean Magic Shop in old Chicago.
Unbelievable.
Netlock, and I did tricks with birds and rabbits and didn't say a word, and never was able to do that again. I couldn't shut up, so, pretty much after that, just kept going. Marshall and I then produced several of the magic kits together with Cookie and...
Sure.
I still see him every week, and it's funny, I see them in there, I play the piano and tell bad jokes, I actually do the same ones every week, but I don't for the, on behalf of the people that work there.
Sure, sure.
So, go in there, but the people love to sing "God Bless America" over there. And Marshall's always busy, and sometimes there's always deals. One time I walked in there and we were doing some magic tricks together to see what he knew, and a lady came over really mad, she's going, "I can't believe they pay you doctors to stand around doing these tricks and jokes. You should be taking care of the people here better." So, I show her a trick, I said, "See, I'm not a doctor, see, I do that?" She goes, "Well then, what do you do for a job? Certainly not that." But we've known each other since 1975, and...
Wow.
Ever since, you know, so, I was a punk, I was just turning 17 in high school, now I'm going to be 60 years old, and I've known him consistently throughout that time, just as well as a couple of years. Even his own son knows him that long.
That's awesome.
I've been doing magic since I was born.
Mr. Brodean, please, join us at the podium.
Please approach the bench, your honor.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, he's got a minute.
Well, like he was saying, I've been around magic ever since I was born, and just joy over the years is seeing different magic shows, and not until I was 22, I got involved in doing magic and kind of following my dad's legacy over that time.
Sure.
I've been in the airline business now for 27 years, why I haven't, like, just done magic full-time, well, pops always told me, "You can't make a real good living being a magician, you really got to hustle and you got to work the weekends." And today, I have a six-year-old daughter that I cherish to death, and thank God I have the weekends off, and it's because of working it for the airlines and selecting the shows that I like to do on the weekends.
That's wonderful.
And thanks to my dad. But I'd like to present you guys with the very last TV magic show, which was the first one.
Yes, it was.
This was signed on June 22nd. I don't give up on my dad, I had him sign it, and I didn't think he would be able to do it for 2018, and he signed it. He signed 12 of them this year already.
Oh my gosh.
On one sitting, so, that was really hard to do.
Mayor, that particular set, what's great about that, it's got the old commercials in it.
Oh, no kidding?
Yeah, it's got the DVD in it.
Yeah.
Wow.
And you can be the talk of your neighborhood if you're not around.
Well, I live in my car, so it's not...
And you'll have fun entertaining your family and friends with the Marshall Brodean TV Magic Show.
And we've got some in the back of my van, right now, for each and every one of you.
And each one of you get a deck of TV magic cards.
Oh wait, you get TV magic cards. You gotta wear your shirt on here, a few of those.
Now, ladies and gentlemen, this is why we have police at the meetings, this is why...
And don't worry, it's under the declared value.
Hey, Ken, Jeff Shulkey would never accept this.
No. I owe you a few. Thank you.
All right, man.
Now, this gentleman dressed exquisitely, from Arobia, I believe, would you care to join us at the podium?
Oh, yes, I would. Yes, I would.
Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. It's a wonderful turnout. Marshall Brodean has inspired more magicians than Harry Houdini, and I'm going to speak briefly about how I know him, and how he's been an inspiration to more people than you could possibly ever imagine or even begin to count.
Actually, Wizzo, if you could turn around, that was your better side, so that's...
Oh, yes, I'll turn around. Dooh! Do you like this side, or do you like that side?
Marshall Brodean.
No, I'm kidding you, Wizzo, you got to...
He's fooling me. Here we go.
The cameras, the cameras are on both sides, so you were on TV, sir.
You must have me under your spell.
The floor is yours.
A few things that I'd like to say about Marshall Senior, and Roy Brown as well, they brought me into the business when I was a Greenhorn, a 1st of May. I had aspirations and desires, and when I knocked on the dressing room door, they said, "Come on in." And our friendship built from then on, and I showed them some video footage, and they said, "Kid, you're good enough to have an agent, here's a card and tell them we sent you." And my life kind of took off right after that. I was inspired, oddly enough, by another individual who just recently spoke, bless you, Mr. Ken Mate, came to my grade school, doing a Spirit of '76 magic show, and I still have that program, and walked up to him and asked him to sign it for me, and I looked at the whole entire presentation that he had, and the magic that Marshall was doing on television was very inspiring, and I just said, "You know what, I think I'd like to go and do that." And so therefore, I made friends with Roy Brown and Marshall. And we always say that his magic sets have inspired more magicians than Harry Houdini. There's not a single person working Las Vegas as a magician who, at one time or another, did not have some of his TV magic cards or a magic set, and Marshall was prolific marketer, creator, various television shows, other performers, Walt Disney, he made sets for all these particular individuals and companies and such, and I am at awe with him. I studied what he is doing in regards to marketing, and when my business partner Glenn Chelius and I were talking about doing something to perpetuate what Marshall Brodean had built over 45 years, I just felt it was improper to allow it just to fade away, because he was one of the last performers still with us from the Bozo Show, which was an incredible program, 10-year waiting list, and thousands, if not millions, upon people every day tuned in, you know, throughout the Chicagoland area, and then once it went cable-wide, it was a nationwide thing, which really just grew exponentially throughout the cable access and such. But in regards to what Glenn and I are interested in doing with Marshall Brodean Junior, God bless him, is to bring Alzheimer's awareness to people, henceforth the purple of Wizzo's costume today, and use magic as a way to not only entertain, but hopefully to inform and bring people into the awareness, because there's not a single family that hasn't been touched in some way or another with a loved one, or a neighbor, or a dear friend who's been dealing with dementia or Alzheimer's. And I want to thank you, Mayor Burns, and everyone here on the council for allowing us this little bit of fun, and to bring awareness to Marshall and his challenges, and hopefully open the doors so other people can realize they're not alone. And maybe someone will pick up Mary's book, and they'll find that, okay, there's a support system out there, and there's certain things that come into play with Alzheimer's and dementia patients and loved ones. And I just really cannot express enough to thank you guys for opening your doors and allowing this pandemonium to happen today. Thank you very much.
Well, we were in a meeting downstairs when you came up the steps, and the meeting stopped.
Oh, it must be the costume, or maybe it's the shoes.
Be honest, this has got to be the first time you've heard such a serious subject with a person with disappearance.
Oh, that's right.
Well, Ken, I can't answer that. Based on legal counsel, I shouldn't really not say anything.
By the way, he happened to accumulate one of the largest collections of Bozo memorabilia, and WGN Bozo memorabilia, and historian of it, and a lot of people don't know, they never really kept a lot of the tapes, and they have to go back to people like Marshall, Thomas, another guy, Keestras, to get the videotape back to put on the shows you see on the holidays, because they didn't keep it, they would tape over them, so if nobody taped it, this is how they got them, these guys would study it. Yeah, we would videotape the stuff, including the commercials, which was interesting enough, and oddly, Ken brings that to light, I have to make note, and a little bragging on my aspect, I was honored to bestow a book that I had written, I bestowed it to Marshall Senior, it was called "The Bozo Chronicles," and it was the early years of the character's development, way before the WGN television show and such, and yeah, it got a little bit crazy, but I used the research time, oddly enough, when I was caring for my stepfather who had Alzheimer's and dementia, and then later, my mom was diagnosed with ovarian cancer, and while I was caring for her, I was working on the project as well. So, caregivers go through quite a bit in regards to mentally, physically, and emotionally, and I was lucky enough to use that project as a buffer to take away some of my stress. But there's a lot of stress with caregivers, and Mary made note of that in regards to her weight loss and her health dropping a little bit, and we're very thankful to have her, and Junior, and Ken Mate, and everybody who goes and visits Senior on a continuing basis. And he would call me, and we would talk about things just about every day, or every other day even, and then he would wind up calling me back, so I saw that there were some challenges arising in his health and in his mindset, he would be like, "Wait a minute, did I just call you about this? I must have just called you about this. I think I'm losing my mind," he would say. And I'm like, "Marshall, you can call anytime, anytime." And I love the guy, like an uncle, and he's always opened his doors and always been overly kind, and he, again, has influenced more magicians than Harry Houdini. And I could go on all night, so I'll leave you with that, and I just want to thank you very much for having us here.
Oh my gosh, thank you very much. I thought the story you told earlier about coming from Elgin down Randall Road in that outfit was quite the scene.
Winnie, we didn't even get pulled over. People were waving at me.
That car that you had, had all those diamonds and all those flashy things on it, I don't understand, what kind of car is that?
Oh, you've never seen a car like that before, have you? "Wizzo, Wizzo has the most unusual car you've ever seen."
Why is that such a...
You know...
Most unusual car? I've never seen that car before.
Yes, well, you won't ever see it, it's a very rare car. It's called a Rose Canardly.
Now, Wiz, why is that car called a Rose Canardly? I don't understand.
Oh, you don't understand why it's called, you know why it's called a Rose Canardly? It's because it rolls down one hill and can hardly make it up the next. Dooh! 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 Thank you very much.
That could be an FCC violation right there. Mary, may I do the honors of reading the proclamation to honor your husband?
Yes, please.
Ladies and gentlemen, from the city of Geneva, Illinois, a proclamation to declare July 10th, 2018, as Marshall Brodean Day in the city of Geneva. Whereas Marshall Brodean is a world-renowned magician who began his illustrious career in the 1940s in the Chicago area, and whereas Marshall Brodean made Geneva, Illinois his home in 1995, and whereas Marshall Brodean, a skilled entertainer, began a career in television as Wizzo the Wizard on the Bozo Show from 1968 to 1994, and whereas in the 1970s and 1980s, Marshall Brodean built a magic empire with magic playing cards and sold on television known as TV magic cards, beloved by baby boomers and Generation Xers alike, and whereas, after Marshall Brodean's diagnosis of Alzheimer's disease, his devoted and lovely wife, Mary Doyle Brodean, her mission was to bring awareness to the disease, and was born in her published book entitled "Navigating Alzheimer's: 12 Truths About Caring for Your Loved Ones." And whereas the city is proud to celebrate and commemorate Marshall Brodean's birthday on Tuesday, July 10th, now therefore, I, Kevin Burns, mayor of Geneva, do hereby proclaim July 10, 2018, as Marshall Brodean Day in the city of Geneva, and on behalf of the more than 22,000 people that proudly call Geneva home, honor his career, magical talents, his family's mission for Alzheimer's awareness, and to joyously celebrate his birthday on this momentous occasion.
Thank you very much, I appreciate the honor. Marshall loved his honors, and he had an office with certificates up, and he would just go crazy about this, so, on some level, I'll try to explain it to him tomorrow, but...
What time's the party tomorrow, Mary? That's what we wanted to know.
Yeah, you know, I think I'll make a copy of it, it's the original, but we'll hang it in his room, so...
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, Mrs. Brodean, and Mr. Brodean Junior, and Wizzo, and the whole gang, if you'd like to stick around, you're more than welcome to, I trust you probably have other things to do, but if not, you're more than welcome to join us. We're going to continue with the meeting, so thank you again for honoring us with your presence, and thank you for the important work you do.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Deal. Can't you just make him up here?
Oh, I wish I could do that.
Wizzo was working the room, folks.
Yeah, yeah. (laughing) Nice work in the room.
Item 3B, ladies and gentlemen, is to consider the mayor's appointment of Paul Zellmer to chairman of the Historic Preservation Commission. Is there a motion? Motion by, I believe it was Alderman Marx?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Bruno. Forgive me if I don't see Mr. Zellmer in the audience. Oh, there you are. Paul, you want to come up?
Sir.
Yeah, you got to follow Wizzo, man, that's like...
It's a tough act to follow.
Tell me about it. Mr. Zellmer, welcome.
Thank you.
You've been on the Historic Preservation Commission for 11 years, I believe.
Five.
Correct.
Four or five.
Four or five, yeah, four.
Four, I believe, yeah.
Why did I say 11? I have no idea.
I don't know, I followed up with a guy from 25 years on the commission, I don't think I'll be...
You're good.
...25-year tenure.
Considerable discussion as to who should be the next chair, you graciously accepted the opportunity to do so. I would open it up to any comments or questions from the council of Mr. Zellmer, or for Mr. Zellmer. Alderman Bruno?
I'd just pipe in, I've worked alongside Paul on the HPC Commission, I think you'll do a fine job, and you've been doing fine work to this point, and it's an important body. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else? We have a motion by Alderman Marx, we have a second by Alderman Bruno to appoint Mr. Zellmer as chairman of the Historic Preservation Commission. A voice vote is sufficient. All those in favor of the appointment, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item 3C is to consider mayor's appointment of Winnie Frankel to the Strategic Planning Advisory Committee. Winnie, come on up. Is there a motion? Oh, moved. Alderman Bruno.
Second.
Alderman Marx makes the second. Winnie, how are you?
I'm well, how are you?
Good, welcome. God, you got to follow Zellmer.
I know, I know.
So, tell us a little bit about yourself, if you will.
Sure. I'm originally from Great Falls, Montana, I was a fifth-generation Montanan.
Wow.
Yeah, and that really shaped my thought process on community and what towns and cities should look like, and I moved to Chicago in my youth, and then when I started a family, I wanted to find some place that made me feel something like Montana a little bit, and I found Geneva, and I really enjoy it here.
That's our new moniker, Geneva, just like Montana.
Yeah, well, it's beautiful, you know, it's, there's a defined aspect of community, I think, within Geneva, its borders are real, and I am excited to participate in the city business moving forward in any way I can, so...
Fantastic. Any comments or questions for Mrs. Frankel? Hearing none, seeing none, we have a motion, we have a second, all in favor of the appointment of Ms. Winnie Frankel to SPAC? Please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Congratulations, and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving right along, folks, item four, amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments this evening offered by any member of the council? Item five is the omnibus agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine by this council and can be adopted, or excuse me, can be considered and adopted with a single motion. Is there such a motion? So moved. Alderman Marx makes the motion.
Second.
Alderman Swanson makes the second. Any questions or comments regarding the omnibus agenda? Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Mike Bruno.
Aye.
Tara Burkhart.
Aye.
Mike Clements.
Aye.
Becky Ruby.
Aye.
Dean Kilburg.
Aye.
Craig Malagra.
Aye.
Richard Marx.
Aye.
Jean McGowan.
Aye.
Jim Rodecky.
Aye.
Robert Swanson.
Aye.
The omnibus agenda passes unanimously.
Bills for payment total $775,219.72.
Mayor, I move that we approve and pay the bills as read the individual items that add up to that amount. Can be found in tonight's packet on the city website.
A motion by Alderman Bruno to pay the bills as presented, which are also available on the website and in our packets. Is there a second? Second. Seconded by Alderman Marx. Questions or comments regarding the bills? Seeing none, hearing none? Mr. Clerk, when you're available?
Mike Bruno.
Aye.
Tara Burkhart.
Aye.
Mike Clements.
Aye.
Becky Ruby.
Aye.
Dean Kilburg.
Aye.
Craig Malodra.
Aye.
Richard Marx.
Aye.
Jean McGowan.
Aye.
Jim Reddick.
Aye.
Robert Swanson.
Aye.
Item 10 passes with 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes, zero abstentions. We move on to item 11, committee of the whole items of business. Item 11A, ladies and gentlemen, is to approve resolution number 2018-59, authorizing execution of a redevelopment agreement, development incentives and reimbursement agreement between the city of Geneva and State Street Coffee LLC. Motion by Marx?
Second.
Seconded by Ruby. This matter is now on the floor for discussion. I would like to remind the audience who's present this evening regarding this matter and those tuning in this evening. Irrespective of a vote, the vote taken tonight, this matter is far from resolved. If there's an affirmative vote to move this forward, this matter is sent to the City of Geneva Plan Commission for review of such items as the building itself, traffic, lighting, landscaping, all that good stuff. And then comes to the committee of the whole and then ultimately the council for considera... Just the council, excuse me, for consideration. If this evening the city council chooses not to advance the redevelopment agreement as proposed, it is up to the developer to determine what their next steps are. So, we will entertain comments or questions, if the council deems appropriate, from those joining us this evening first? Or would you prefer to ask your questions first? I'll defer to the council. From the audience, we kindly ask whomever wishes to join us. I'm going to begin on the left-hand side of the room. Just raise your hand, join us to the podium. Share with us your name. You do not have to share with us your address. And please be cogent, please be relevant, and please be respectful of those who might speak differently than you when they join the podium. Yes, sir. Welcome.
My name is Lamar Owings. I've been a resident of Geneva 42 years.
Hello, Ms. Owings.
And I admit that I'm not up to speed in terms of all of the financial implications for the city of Geneva, but I've just heard some things in the last couple of days and I felt compelled to come tonight to just add a few thoughts. I love the ambience of Geneva. Both my kids graduated from Geneva High School and both are architects. And during the time my son was in school, a lot of development on Randall occurred. And he was home and we were driving from Randall from 38 to Fabian one night and he said, "Dan, what happened to my town? This is the great sameness of America here on Randall Road. It used to be beautiful." And there is... There's McDonald's everywhere. There's Burger King everywhere. There's Kentucky Fried Chicken everywhere. There's Dunkin' Donuts everywhere. So, then my wife and her partner were, for 22 years, business owners in the Third Street Carter. They owned the Bean Hive right behind Graham's Chocolate on Franklin there. And they just developed quite a business, had beads from every part of the world along with the accoutrements that go with it. And they had customers coming in from all over the Chicago area, Hinsdale, Downers Grove, Highland Park, Deerfield, to buy beads in Geneva. The high-end items sustained the business, but they needed a base level of some of the commonly occurring items to keep their cash flow going. They decided to close the shop and retire in 2015, after which point my wife passed away. But the two years prior to that, they basically made no money. Now, a big contributor to that was some of the stuff on Randall. People could go get those cheap items at Michael's and places like that and they basically closed the shop. So, I'm speaking from a point of not having enough facts at hand, but tonight was the meeting and I just felt compelled to come and offer some thoughts. I love the ambience of Geneva and let's not join the great sameness of America. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Owings. Ladies and gentlemen, forgive me in advance for this next statement. Applause. Hooting and hollering, vet away, yes, we agree. Let's limit that. In fact, let's just eliminate that because what I don't want to see happen, and I believe the council would concur, is that if someone should speak contrarily, I don't... And we don't want to hear negative reaction as well. So, if you would permit me that luxury and permit us that luxury, it would be greatly appreciated. From the left side of the room, from the south side of the room, anyone else who wishes to speak? Yes, welcome. And again, folks, we're discussing the redevelopment agreement, which is the financial aspect of this opportunity. We are not discussing what the building may look like. We're not discussing whether or not there's a traffic issue. We're not discussing lighting. We're not discussing landscaping. We're simply discussing the financial aspects. My... My, excuse me, our legal counsel has advised me to make that statement and if necessary, to make that statement multiple times. If absolutely necessary, Mr. Sandak, the city attorney, will interject to remind us all what we need to be talking about. So, forgive me and welcome.
Thank you. My name's Debbie Hansen. I'm a resident of the far east side of Geneva, being off of Kirk Road on Geneva East. I've been living in Geneva close to 30 years and I would like to voice my support for the proposal of the property on Chrissy Avenue for Dunkin' Donuts or whatever. I work, shop, and play in Geneva and I've been disappointed for years at the lack of a coffee shop, a diner, just basically more options on our side of town. Randall Road, I feel, is overkill, yet the east corridor is almost vacant. My adult children, I know my neighbors, I have coworkers. People mention this. We talk about this all the time. Yes, there are other facilities on Randall Road or the east side of St. Charles, but driving to any of these other options is often not feasible. But more importantly, it's not taking my dollars and putting my money back into the sales tax revenue of Geneva. All of these other Dunkin' Donuts, coffee shops, whatever, are in Batavia, West Chicago, and St. Charles. While Geneva has plenty of Starbucks as an option, there are no Dunkin' Donuts. Additionally, the property that we're talking about is already developed. If we are not sacrificing green space. If we were talking about using up green space, something like that, I would not be for it at all. Right now, unfortunately, it's an eyesore. As you head down 38 into the beautiful downtown area, there are, I counted up today, eight properties for sale or vacant. And you head into the downtown, you have this beautifully decorated bridge. You have numbers of people coming from the east into our downtown area, especially coming down for the festivals, Festival of the Vine, Christmas Walk, Swedish Days. There are no options for someplace to get a quick stop, to get something, other than McDonald's. Some of the locations, such as the corner of 38 and East Side Drive, have been vacant for almost as long as I've lived here. We're talking like 30 years. So, while I'm not advocating for development for the sake of development, having vacant property that's an eyesore also does us no good. If we could get a mom-and-pop shop in there, that would be great. I'd be all for that. However, we're talking that property on the piece of Chrissy. That is a... To me, it seems like a very difficult piece of property. And I would think you would need something strong with a strong fan base, something like a Dunkin' Donuts where you have people that will come for that. That doesn't necessarily mean that the rest of the corridor is going to go downhill, but maybe it will serve as a magnet or a catalyst for other businesses to say, "Well, that's there." Now, maybe they will look at my small shop across the street. As far as competition for the other businesses, I really don't think that a Heidies or Fresh Donuts would... I don't see them in the same venue. They're not... The items that they market are not in direct competition. Dunkin' Donuts is more of a beverage and more of a lunch sort of menu. These are options that Fresh Donuts and Heidies do not offer. So, I don't think that there's that. Also, if you look at West Chicago, they have Dunkin' Donuts across the street from each other. And if you take a one or two-mile stretch of North Avenue, 64, you have two Dunkin' Donuts, a Bosa Donuts, a Dimples Donuts, and a Panera within about a mile or two. So, obviously, the market is there. The people will come. I don't think it would be a dead... You know, that you'd be taking anything away from the other competition, from the other businesses that are truly the heart of Geneva. So, anyway, enough said. I just wanted to voice my support. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. From the south side of the room, anyone else wishes to... Yes, sir. Welcome.
My name's Tim Erickson.
Sorry, sir, can you state that again?
My name's Tim Erickson.
Tim Erickson, yes, sir.
I grew up in Geneva, left, came back because I love the small town. I just think giving them $102,000 is going ridiculous. They're a big franchise. They already got two others and they'd have to recoup over $20 million in sales before we even start getting back our money. So, I think if you have $20 million in sales, that's going to destroy Fresh Donuts.
Thank you, sir. From the south side of the room. Moving to the north side of the room. This... I believe it... Is that a... Forgive me. This gentleman, yes, sir. How are you? Did the word gentleman startle you?
I am, yeah. I try to be.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Doug Strom. I live in Geneva. I rise as a baked goods enthusiast. I love Fresh Donuts and I go there frequently. I did not know... You can probably tell. You people don't look like any of you go to the donut store, but I go all the time. Fresh Donuts is a great place to get a donut, but the real reason you're here is because of the financial aspect of this matter. I know Mr. Timoshenko has done a good job in getting some interest in that property on Chrissy. I appreciate that the city is trying to get something in there. But Geneva is not the kind of place that you have to bribe anybody to come and put a business in here. To the extent that Geneva is looking to turn over hard-earned tax dollars to a corporation with a pre-existing interest in two other donut stores, to compete against basically Fresh Donuts and some other donut shops, mom-and-pop places along that same corridor, seems counterproductive at best. I agree with the lady who spoke earlier that that particular plot of land is an eyesore. I think the development of that plot is a good idea. I don't disagree that maybe Dunkin' Donuts could even go in there. But to give Dunkin' Donuts or the franchisee $172,000, basically, to move in there is, again, counterproductive and I think against the interests of the taxpayers. So, I would move that the assembly here vote against granting the redevelopment agreement to the franchisee. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I saw another gentleman's hand. Yes, sir, welcome.
Hello, everybody. My name is Kevin Howe. I've lived in Geneva since 2006, splitting my time between the east side and the west side. Currently reside in the east side. I've put two children through the school systems here and now in college and I have two stepchildren that are currently in the school systems. And I do thank you, all of you, for giving us the opportunity to have a voice in this matter. I don't know how many of you have been following. There's a post on Facebook on what's happening in Geneva. But, and I think Alderman Bruno has been following it a little bit. It's basically the last few weeks and a lot of opinions on this topic, mostly against the development of it. I've observed hundreds of comments throughout this time. Some people don't want it, you know, for traffic reasons. Some don't want it because it's an eyesore. Others just don't want another fast food place on the east side, especially if it's using our tax money. I mean, personally, I agree with all of these points, but the main point that I really connect with is it's just not who we are as Genovians. I was drawn to Geneva back in 2006 for many reasons. Schools were great, beautiful town, train station access, and most important, the small businesses that truly shaped the community. Fresh Donuts is one of those businesses. It embodies exactly what all those shops on Third Street have. A small business that stands out against the big chains because of the heart and soul that they put into their business. That's what makes people come out to Geneva from other locations, even downtown Chicago. Diluting that with yet another fast food chain would truly be a shame. Thank you to Alderman Burkhart, Clements, Kilburg, and to one of our own on the east side, Alderman Swanson, for voting against last opportunity. I'm disappointed that more of the east side aldermen voted in favor of the Dunkin' Donuts going into our east side neighborhood. Alderman Bruno mentioned in the last discussion about understanding and continuing to develop our brand that Geneva is. I'm sad to see so many elected officials looking past that in an effort just to fill a location that no one else wants. And you want to use our taxpayer money to accomplish this. If this developer is so successful, why does he need to borrow from us? Why should they get the breaks? Don't we want to provide that support to our mom-and-pop shops? On the east side, we love Rigginato's, Jen Ho, Jose Maria's, and many more. Also includes Fresh Donuts. There was one other comment from an alderman about driving past the site every day. And I'm not sure if you live on the east side or if you just drive through it, but we don't just drive by it. We live here. This is our neighborhood. It was referred to us... It was referred to as an eyesore, as it currently stands, with flaking paint and obvious wear. Compared to the historical mess on the river, in my opinion, it looks more of like an attraction. I mean, we can't compare one to the other. I'm amazed to see, I'm not sure if you've seen in front of you, over 1,200 signatures on a petition at the Fresh Donuts store. I went there two weeks ago and there were 200. I think that says a lot about how people feel in this community. Ching, who is the owner. We will support you in every way. We as Genovians, Genovians need you here. So, and we look forward to giving you and continue that support. Thank you all for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. From the north side of the room. Yes.
Did you take two of us?
It depends. Do you know each other? Do you feel safe with him anywhere near you?
I'm Marilyn Church, 946 Ginger Lane.
How are you, Marilyn?
Fine.
Good. Please tell me you're Mr. Church.
She's my... Yeah, she's my protection.
Well, I just have to say, we just love Fresh Donuts. Our church is on the east side. We all love Fresh Donuts and we try to give them our business and they're always smiling and they give us a discount. But I have to say, I went to a Dunkin' Donuts two years ago. It was winter time. And they handed me the donuts and I said, "These are cold." They said, "Well, they just came off the truck." I said, "What do you mean? You don't make them here?" "No, they don't. They bring them here." You don't make them here?" "No, they don't. They bring them here." Fresh doughnuts. How many of you have had a fresh doughnut? Go! There is no comparison. So, I just plead with you, have a heart. These are hard-working people that did this by themselves. They didn't ask for $70,000. Please. I'll turn it over to you for the last word.
Financially, I just don't like the tax... I don't want to pay the taxes to enhance an already successful, well-capitalized business at the potential expense of taking a hard entrepreneur, non-Caucasian, people who have built a business. I think our town is... likes the small hometown kind of thing. We certainly do like it at the church, and we support a lot of different activities and enterprises to the community. So, we like... We think it's a perfect spot to get good doughnuts and tasty doughnuts. So, I don't want to see my tax dollar go to enhance a successful, well-capitalized business at the expense of losing a very warm and inviting, good product. Unbeatable. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir, welcome. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good.
My name's Jim Viverito. I live in Geneva.
Mr. Viverito, just like it sounds.
Just like it sounds. That was easy.
Good to see you again, Jim.
You too. And thank you, everybody, for listening to us. You know, everything that has been said already. We did come with a plan, but you made it clear how, you know, what not to speak to. And I would just say that, you know, I came to Geneva because it's a small city, and my kids both graduated here. I have two businesses in the area, and, you know, we just love Geneva. Small business idea, small-town idea. My kids, when they left, you know, like, middle school, they went to high school with the same people they were in middle school with. So, it's a big deal as a child growing up. However, you know, I see that Sonita, that's her name, who owns Fresh Doughnut, she does a very good job at her business. Everybody loves her. It is a fresh doughnut. As a matter of fact, I had the chance to have one made for me in one day that I had stopped there, and it was unbelievable. I mean, the chocolate is different than it is anywhere else, you know, and the cake is the right way. So, never did I understand that until I went to Fresh Doughnut. So, it's definitely a great place to go. I do understand that, you know, I believe there's going to be problems traffic-wise coming east. But Sonita did not ask for money when she started her business. She came in like the rest of us and decided to work hard, her and her husband. I mean, he's there at 2:00 in the morning, and he's there till 3:00 in the afternoon, and she's there most of the day with him. They're hard-working people. It makes sense for us to keep our thoughts the way Geneva has grown up. I've been here for 30-something years myself, and I think it's important that we understand or still understand that Third Street looks like Third Street because of people in this room, because of how you guys think. And it's important to me that, you know, small business, and that's all small business, that made it through when we decided to generate all the new business up on Randall Road. And it made it through with flying colors, but it was because of what happens in this room, I believe. So, it's important that we keep that in mind when we're thinking about a small business that really isn't on the busy street. It's behind other businesses that also have the same things. You know, McDonald's and Pride, they both sell coffee, but this is more doughnuts. And it's important that the big company, they can afford to do whatever they want, but getting my tax dollars is almost hurtful. It just doesn't... It doesn't make sense to me to give our money to somebody that really could afford it and watch somebody else possibly go out of business for that reason. So, you know, it's a hard game to play, and you guys all have to think about it. And I appreciate your time. And in closing, I would just ask that if you do do the traffic studies, we would like to know about it. At least give Soni or Sonita a call, let her know that there's some information about it so that we can look at it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Viverito. Yes, sir. Good evening.
Hi. My name is Mike Sellegran, and I can't believe I can say this. I've been here 17 years now in Geneva, so...
Wow.
It's a... Time goes by fast.
Indeed.
Please bear with me. Public speaking is probably not my thing, so if I kind of ramble on, just, I guess, deal with it. Everybody makes great points, and I appreciate even the lady who wants the Dunkin' Donuts. At one point in my life, I would have killed to have a Dunkin' Donuts here. But unfortunately, where I live, I also have the neighbors who own the Fresh Doughnuts. You go to their house on Halloween, they hand out doughnuts.
Well, now you're in trouble, because...
Yeah.[889.13][889.13](laughing) I just want to throw out the point that, you know, let's not forget about that. These are people who live in Geneva, whose children will be going to school in Geneva. And I don't... I don't want to say, you know what, the heck with you guys, because we're going to get a Dunkin' Donuts here, you know? I don't... There's lots of potential. There's lots of property, and I don't think... I feel like we're selling ourselves out. Everybody here has come up here and said they love the small-town feel. They love Geneva for those reasons. Well, that is the reason. I mean, we have a family here working hard in that place every day. And so, just to say, you know what, the heck with you guys. We're getting Dunkin' Donuts now. We don't need you anymore. And that's... As a neighbor, and I just... That's really all I have to say about that.
Thank you, sir.
And also, I just, like, wanted to say, Becky, I know this is your district, but these are people who live in your district too, so I just... That's really all I got to say.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir, this gentleman in the middle? You went on the north or the south, man. Well done. I like that.
I apologize. I confused myself.
It's all good.
So, thank you, Mayor and council members. My name is Gabe Millard. I actually live on the east side... Sorry?
Yep.
Yeah, message. I live on Kane Street, so I'm immediately about a block away from the proposed site. I thank you all for your diligent work. I know this is tireless and mostly thankful, but we do appreciate it a great deal. So, with that being said, to stick to the financial aspect of things, the 21 years, if I am correct, the 21 years remaining on this TIF is a substantial benefit to this business coming in as it is. The tax incentives, I also work for municipalities, so I understand the budget crunches that we constantly go through. This is not going to make it any easier on you folks in the future. I mean, you're going to do this to yourself, in essence. So, with that, I just ask you to take that into consideration. There are repercussions that'll come for the, you know, 10 years here with the potential benefit being the $102,000 just on tax savings alone, that through this time, you know, this is going to affect us down the road a little bit, not just right now, and just not this decision tonight. So, I appreciate it. And like you said, this is a long process. There'll be much more to come. So, I thank you for the venue to say that, and appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the north... Yes, welcome.
Hi, I'm back again.
Hello, welcome.
Hi, my name's Sonita Cheng, and I'm the owner at the Fresh Doughnuts. And today, I come with 1,200 signatures signed by all the people that, again, the city granting money to Dunkin' Donuts. And I also have a copy for everyone at the desk.
Sonita, is that... Sonita gave me something that she wrote, and I think she'd rather that I read it, if that's all right with you.
Yeah, no objection from the council? By all means, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Aldermen, staff, and members of the public who have so overwhelmingly supported my being here in opposition to the city granting Dunkin' Donuts a $70,000 grant and an additional $102,000 sales tax rebate. My name is Sonita Cheng.
Yes.
Okay. Owner of Fresh Doughnuts located in Geneva, less than a mile away from the proposed development. Once again, I'm here requesting the City Council reconsider approving State Street Coffee's request for money from the city for their doughnut shop's development. Understanding the city's desire for development on the east side, I, along with some other customers and residents who have signed the petition, are here in opposition to the city's participation in the financing of this development. We have 1,200 signatures on the petition that you have in front of you. Some seem to think that big business is the only way for the city to develop vacant space in the city. There are many comments regarding the major franchise or bigger fish investing in developments like this. Others will not come. Geneva is recognized for its small-business community, not its big-fish community. The Realtor representing the developer recently commented in a Chronicle article that although Dunkin' Donuts isn't sexy, its presence within the city's... With the city's money will generate other development. I am not opposed to them opening their business, just not with our tax money. And Alderman commented it may be our only option right now. Hopefully, we haven't gotten to the point where that option... To the point where any option is the best one when making this decision. It was also commented that she drives past regularly and noticed the difficulty going west and turning south in this location. Have we looked at the traffic impact this development will have on the westbound traffic turning left into any business here?
Sir, if there's additional paragraphs in that statement, with all due respect with... Regarding the development, not relevant to the financial, I would kindly ask that you skip over those.
Okay. As numerous Aldermen have commented on the redevelopment of the area, they seem to be focused on the big guys and not the small business in their comments. They need to look even harder at an issue like traffic impact. Bigger is not always better.
Again, let's not sneak in anything about this.
I'm sorry.
It's all right, almost.
Okay.
For those Aldermen who voted against the incentive package, I say thank you. My overwhelming number of customers, the 1,200 on the petition in particular, who have signed the petition, commented on Facebook, and stepped in to support us, I say thank you. For those who supported the redevelopment incentives, I ask you to reconsider that is your bird in the hand, and just because we don't own our facility doesn't mean that we don't have financial risk or capital-outlay concerns. We are a small business, unlike the developer in front of you, asking for your financial help for money that will leave the community. If bankers and investors won't fully back this project, why should the taxpayers of Geneva? I thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else who would like to speak? Just simply raise your hand, and we'll invite you up to the podium. Otherwise, we will... Oh, I thought... Did you raise your hand? Oh, sorry about that. Oh, yes. Welcome. How are you, sir?
Hello. My name is Jay Patel. I have been living in Geneva about 15 years, and frankly, I'm here on accident. About 15 years ago, I was trying to get from Schaumburg to DeKalb, and I got lost. I got very, very, very lost.
You know that's going to be the headlines tomorrow, don't you?[1302.15][1302.15](laughing)
Very likely. I stopped at Old Town for a burger. I figured I was late for my appointment anyway. I wandered down Third Street, and I realized this is where I wanted to be. I was looking for a house. I was looking for a place to actually have that's not an apartment, something that I wanted to settle in for a long, long time, and this has been my home ever since. I settled down here when I was single, and eventually, jobs changed, and I had to go a long way away. I was commuting to, well, Rolling Road. Anyone know that?
Yes, sir.
Kirkoff. I was taking more than an hour trip in traffic every single morning, but this was my home. I choose to be here because this is what I love, and it's worth it to me to be here and make that trip. We've been looking at the financial aspects, and that is absolutely true. When it comes to paying taxes, when it comes to a business asking for money from our city to basically set up shop, that's absolutely true. Like, I get it. It makes sense. But I think you're overlooking another financial outlet: us. I chose to make this place my home, and I didn't do it because of Dunkin' Donuts. I did it because of Old Town. I did it because of all the shops up and down Third Street. If I'd stopped in a place, if I'd had the misfortune to be lost someplace else, and stopped at a Chili's or a TGI Friday's, if I had taken another street and just seen acre after acre of outlet malls, it never would have made the impact on me that this place has. If you're looking at giving that kind of money away to a company to actually set up shop here, I entirely understand, and people here have made some very good points. I live on the east side. I don't like some of the rundown places. It would be nice to get businesses in there, no doubt about it, but I'm not here for the stuff that you can get anywhere else. And what's more, insofar as I'm choosing to live here and pay taxes here, insofar as it's inconvenient to me to be here, but I love it anyway, you are making that money in taxes from us because of Fresh Doughnuts, because of all those local businesses that keeps people here. Look at Aurora. Look at Elgin. Look at the turnover in those homes. You won't find that here. You won't find that here because people here have chosen to be here, chose to raise their families here, chosen to set up shops of their own here. And in my case, it meant changing jobs. Because if I can't be here, it's not worth it to me to actually travel someplace else. This is my home. I'd really, really like it if you could reconsider making sure that all of the businesses that are here stay small. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak to the issue prior to my invitation for the Representatives of State Street Coffee LLC to join us at the podium? Seeing none? Are there representatives present this evening from State Street Coffee LLC? Again, just for everyone's benefit, just share your name and who you're representing.
My name is Barry Millman. I'm a principal at a company called Horizon Realty Services. I'm the real estate representative for Dunkin' Donuts in this region, and have been working with this particular franchisee for many years, had the experience of opening approximately 80 different Dunkin' Donuts units throughout the metropolitan area. With me tonight is Tom Thiem, who's the manager and director of State Street Doughnuts and part of the franchise development organization that operates this particular franchise entity. So, we've heard, and I mentioned this in my introduction, I'm not trying to brag. I'm trying to point out that we have heard these arguments many, many times. The operator of the Dunkin' Donuts is not an unknown entity. It's not an anonymous person. It's just an entrepreneur like you or I might be, or any of the operators here. We have already proven through being requested that, in effect, Dunkin' Donuts does encourage and improve the business of other Dunkins and of other independent doughnut stores in the area. And it's already been mentioned here. In St. Charles, there are two Dunkins within a mile of each other and two independent doughnut stores. The Dunkin' Donuts came in when Bosa's Donuts was sitting there on their own. We heard many arguments, why are we coming in? We didn't come in to put anybody out of business. In fact, the person who is selling us this property is the landlord for Fresh Doughnuts. So, if he felt that there was going to be a negative impact on his... Their store, I'm sure that he would have thought twice about thinking about selling the property to Dunkin'. So, those are some of our thoughts. Tom can talk about what's going on with the operations of Dunkin'. It is changing to a certain extent, and this will be a prototype store that is, as I think I mentioned at the last meeting, will be the first in the country in this current design and what is going on in Dunkin' in terms of how they are changing a little bit in what their primary focus is.
Thanks, Barry. My name is Tom Thiem. I run the Dunkin' Donuts in this area in St. Charles.
Tom, just a brief reminder, as I said to others, let's try our very best to keep this on the financial aspects.
I will.
So, you'll permit me the luxury or...
Sure. And all I want to say is I don't want to put anybody out of business. There's plenty of doughnuts to go around. She does have great doughnuts there. Doughnuts is not our whole business. It's probably 20% to 15% of our business. So, that's not why we're picking that site and trying to put her out of business. So, that's really all I got to say.
Thank you, sir.
The plan is, in the future, through Dunkin' Corporate, to change the name of the company from Dunkin' Donuts to Dunkin'.
It's irrelevant, Barry, so we'll focus on the financial aspect of it.
And the reason for the financial need that we have here is primarily, land is expensive in Geneva, very expensive. We're not renting. We're buying. We're purchasing a property where we will end up investing over a million and a half... over a million and a half dollars in the community. We will be employing 30 people on a part-time basis throughout the community. We'll be giving jobs to high school kids, we'll be giving jobs to moms who want to work in the morning. This is not something that in a large behemoth corporation is coming in. We're investing our own money here. I wish we didn't have to come here and ask for money. However, the costs involved in developing a Dunkin', purchasing the land, doing the site work that's required in order to take this property that's been vacant since 2014 and bring it up to current codes and standards for development are very high, and all these funds are coming from our pockets. So I recognize this is not something that everybody is excited about. Believe me, we've been through this in Geneva before. We've tried and tried to open a Dunkin' in Geneva. We don't know why you don't like us, but we'll continue to try, and we hope that we can work something out with your kind support.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. If the council... I didn't skip over you earlier.
Good evening. No, you didn't. I'm Nancy Leighton. I have the Patent House in Geneva, as most of you know. I just would like to make one comment, which is off, it's the financial, but it's off this, you know, this gentleman made the comment. I own my property, I bought my property, I renovated my property, I employ high school kids, moms, I employ 55 people, and 65 in the summer. I renovated my property within the budget that I could do it, and I think that the Patent House has become a great asset to Geneva. We pay our own sales tax, we pay property taxes, and I didn't ever, I didn't, I asked if there was any incentives, but there were no incentives. I didn't get any money. I did this within a budget that I could afford, and it was, it just hit me right now. I think every business in our community is just what Dunkin' Donuts is saying. We all do the same thing, and we've all paid our own way. I think that's what, that's what the important point is right here. We've paid our way, and if, I understand the investment, and I would hope someplace, I think the city of Geneva has to set a precedence where, are we going to give people money, our tax dollars, or we're not going to? Because there's a lot of, there's, some people are getting tax dollars from Geneva, some people are getting tax incentives, and many people are being told that they can't have the tax incentives. And I'm, I think that that should be a clear point for us, to set some sort of precedence. Can all the businesses come and ask for money? Not just a few, to just develop what they want to do? And I, I just, it just hit me that I think that that has to be clarified by our city and by our city council. That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else who I may have overlooked before I invite our members of the council? Floor is open to the council members. Anyone wish to ask questions of either professional staff and/or the Hare Group or State Street Coffee LLC regarding the financial package before us? Seeing none? Hearing none? Okay. There you go. That's the prompt. Where's Wizzo? Alderman Burghart, Alderman Kilberg, Alderman Bruno.
First off, I'd like to say thank you for the work of our economic development team, Kathleen, of course, in preparing the information we need to make an informed decision on these complex issues. I appreciate your hard work and the follow-up to answer our subsequent questions. For me, this proposal serves as an example of my initial reservations with establishing TIF districts. TIF districts create imperfect markets where property owners and developers have little incentive to reach agreements based solely on supply and demand. The creation of TIF districts by definition indicates a willingness for elected officials to open the taxpayer's wallet and transfer their money to private enterprises without clearly establishing financial need. In this case, we have not only a TIF grant, but also a sales tax incentive. You have to ask yourself during our last conversation two weeks ago on this proposal, what economic metrics were cited to justify the use of taxpayer assistance for this project? Does this opportunity create high-paying jobs for residents that facilitate long-term growth? No, in fact, the proposal, we've heard that it'll be 30 part-time jobs, and local postings for part-time crew members in St. Charles advertise hourly wages under $10 an hour. So the employment impact of this project, in my mind, is minimal. Does this project provide our residents with a good or service that is currently not available? I won't go into that, but we have talked tonight, we have many opportunities for coffee and donuts in the area. Does this proposal spur economic growth in the area? When Mr. Millman, the real estate broker representing the petitioner, was pressed for the type of economic activity we could expect to develop around a Dunkin' Donuts, he cited a sandwich shop moved nearby in the North Shore. We've heard the argument that no other interest has been shown in this particular property. I wonder what drives this lack of interest? We are told the property has been for sale since 2014. March of 2014 also served as the initial engagement of consultants to look at the creation of the Fox River TIF III, a fact we have to assume was known to property owners in the area. Is the pricing of this parcel and subsequent lack of interest market-driven, or is it incentive-driven, with property owners understanding that taxpayer assistance may be available to fill the gap between their inflated asking price and the true market price? Just as with all these incentives, it is difficult to know what development would transpire without assistance, and the real reasons that some of these parcels sit vacant or underutilized. But I'm not comfortable with continuing to use public dollars to resolve issues that may not be market-related and have undetermined economic benefit. The city council should be exceptionally critical of every taxpayer assistance request that comes before us and limit those to, limit approval to those with clearly demonstrated financial need and economic benefit. According to QSR Magazine, that's Quick Service Restaurant Magazine for those don't read it, the average Dunkin' Donuts unit generated $929,000 in sales in 2016. So that's nearly $10 million in sales over the course of this proposed 10-year incentive agreement. But we're told this project is not economically viable, and the business model falls apart if we don't provide $172,000 of taxpayer incentives. It's a smart move for a developer to request taxpayer dollars to subsidize this project, but in this case, it is a smarter move for this city council on behalf of the taxpayers of Geneva to say no.
Alderman Kilberg we recognize next, and Alderman Bruno. I have been asked by our council, Mr. Sandak, to remind the council as well that the issue before us this evening is the financial package as presented. It is not, respectfully, the TIF that has been established by a previous council and enacted accordingly. So this evening's comments should be directed strictly toward the financial package as presented to State Street Coffee LLC. Mr. Kilberg, the floor is yours.
There's not a lot that I can add to the message the community residents shared with the council this evening. Just a couple of points. Our staff, as well as Mr. Millman, have, has alluded to the fact that the Dunkin' Donuts in St. Charles have not impacted the business of those Dunkin', those donut shops, Bosa Donuts, as well as Dimple Donuts. Well, I would tend to disagree. I don't know if anyone had ever even visited with those businesses. I don't believe so, because I went and met with both of them this weekend, and both of them have been impacted. Bosa Donuts, Mr. Vichet, V-I-C-H-E-T, is the owner, and he said that when the Dunkin' Donuts appeared on East 64, it impacted his business through the week by anywhere between 20% and 25%, and on weekends, about 10% to 15%. And Dimple Donuts, although new to the area, feels as though it is impacting their business as well, although they couldn't quantify what, to what extent. Again, I, I just would wish that when people give us information, they would actually give us the facts and actually speak to the parties that are involved. That's all I have. Thank you.
Respectfully, Alderman Kilberg, and forgive me, ladies and gentlemen, but the assumption is that the information you've received is 100% accurate. We can assume all we want. I allowed Alderman Kilberg to speak to this matter, but I should have cut him off, quite frankly, because whether or not other donut shops in other communities were impacted by other donut shops opening in other communities is irrelevant to tonight's discussion. Tonight's discussion is about the financial package before us. So forgive me for being perhaps too lenient, but...
Mayor, may I speak to that? In other words, I think we're talking about need here as it relates to the financial package, and the thing is, is that if we're given misinformation...
Well, you're seeing, now, Alderman Kilberg, forgive me for interrupting. You are assuming and you are accusing professional staff and others of giving you misinformation. Is that a fair statement?
Mayor, I would refer to the...
Your microphone again, sorry.
Mayor, I would refer to the memo from staff dated June 29th, 2018, 4:45 PM, where it states that these donut, essentially in summary, that these businesses have not been impacted. So what I did was I investigated, and I don't think that that, I feel that that information is relevant. Thank you.
So to clarify, you believe the information presented by staff is inaccurate and intended to manipulate?
No.
Okay. From the council, Alderman Bruno.
Mayor, one point to that.
Alderman Bruno is recognized. No. Alderman Bruno. Alderman Bruno is recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's see, I've got notes here, I'll try and tie that in specifically to economics, but I'll probably diverge somewhat. A lot was said about the brand of Geneva. With the help from staff, I've spent no small amount of time looking at the East Side. It was even a campaign platform of mine way back to create the West Side on the East Side. I've sadly come to think that East State Street, simply because of traffic funneling, is a different animal than the West Side. Talking with staff, there has only been automotive-oriented businesses that have had interest along that corridor for the substantial parcels. A lot of the commentary came to national chains, and citing downtown Geneva. We only, we don't have national chains, too many anyway, downtown, simply because our parcels don't, national chains don't want the types of parcels we have downtown. If we were to consider not allowing national chains, that would be potentially direct competitors with local businesses, then we have to use, what kind of, what kind of yardstick do we use? If we're, do we just say none? Because this is eight tenths of a mile away from Fresh Donuts. Do we just say no chains within a mile of a competitor? That would effectively mean we have no national chains everywhere, and I just find that untenable I firmly believe that these are serving very different markets. If I drive an hour or a mile to go to Lou Malnati's for a pizza, and a Domino's opens up next door to me, I'm still driving to Lou Malnati's because I want a boutique product, a good, you know, that type of product. We get into the monies. This is kind of the nature of the TIF, and it's, you know, reasonable people can disagree as to how we, whether the TIF is appropriate, or whether this is a good use of the TIF. Speaking with another municipal attorney, I look at the TIF as not necessarily, well, first of all, I don't think we're giving it to Dunkin' Donuts, we're giving it to whomever is willing to invest in this property. And I think, as opposed to giving them an advantage, I think we're rather in this challenged area of the TIF. We are really leveling the playing field in terms of the properties. Again, reasonable people can differ on that dollar amount. Let's see. Oh, and to a point Nancy brought up, anyone can ask for an incentive anytime for anything. The city just has to vet that to see if the community benefits from it, but anyone can ask for anything anytime. In fact, if, if one of the Far East Side pastry places came to the site, I'm sure we'd be happy to present an incentive to them too, but they're not here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. From the DAS. Alderman Maladra.
So can you tell this is a tough one? This is a tricky. So my thoughts coming into tonight's meeting, first and foremost, I'm happy to see that everybody here realizes we're talking about financial incentives, we are not talking about the specifics of this development. Personally, I have some serious concerns about the hours of operation, about the drive-thru, about things we're not supposed to talk about, but I just snuck in. But those are for a later date. What we're talking about tonight is if this business brings us a proposition that this council feels will benefit Geneva, are we willing to offer them incentives to work at this site? There's strong views on both sides. I'm glad everybody was here to express their positions. I've heard a lot over the past several weeks, and I'm happy to say that it's not as one-sided as it might seem. There are people on the East Side who oppose this for a variety of reasons, and there are people on the East Side who favor it just as well. Of those who oppose, the main objections seem to be the use of local funds for a national chain, the threat that that chain poses to the local businesses, and giving away sales tax when we just passed a sales tax revenue, a sales tax increase to help us with some of our revenue challenges. Regarding the last one first, the use of a sales tax rebate, this is an option we've used before, and in my opinion, it's an option that we use when a smaller percentage of something is better than a larger percentage of nothing. You know, we can say all we want about what we would like to see, we can say all we want about, you know, sticking to our guns and keeping the tax rate whole, but if nothing's happening at that site, we're getting nothing. Tara mentioned, you know, that this site has been available for four years, during which time we've received no interest, we've, there's been no interest other than these guys. Nobody that we've chased down has expressed interest in it, and nobody has approached us about it. And there are probably a variety of factors leading up to that, but which of those factors can we control? If we think that the asking price is too high, what can the city of Geneva do? We could wait until the market drives the price down, but how long would we be waiting? It's been four years so far, and it hasn't changed. What is in our control is the ability to offset the price somewhat via one of the very few tools that are available to us. One of them is the TIF itself, but TIF III is new and doesn't have a lot of increment generated yet. And so the other is the sales tax rebate. Is the sales tax rebate a better option than the TIF? When I first started looking at this, I didn't like the idea of borrowing from TIF II. I thought it was a short-term loan, and I wasn't sure that TIF III would be able to pay it back, but turns out we could make it a long-term loan. But I'm still not sure that that's a better solution. If this development does not pan out, if this development does not generate sales tax and improve the area and things like that, we would still have to pay that loan back. This effectively reduces the amount of the increment that could be used on other developments or redevelopment at this site. The sales tax rebate costs us nothing if this development doesn't work out. They don't generate sales, we don't get anything, but we're not getting anything now. If they do generate sales, if they do generate the average of $1 million a year, we're getting 50% of the sales tax on that, nothing as opposed to 50% on an average of $1 million. So I'm comfortable, if we decide to do this, I'm comfortable using the sales tax rebate as the tool. Another objection has been change of small businesses. I would start by saying I would love a small business to locate there, but I haven't seen any small businesses looking to do that. And don't mistake that we're not trying to make something happen. I think that the establish, establishing a TIF, the knowledge that we do offer sales tax incentives, I think that businesses are aware that the city is here to do what it can to help, and yet there's no interest. There is, there's been nothing, nothing in this area for four years, and that's got to be reckoned with as well. Chains, Dunkin', yeah, they're a chain, but so is Aldi's, so is CVS, so is Dairy Queen. I like the Dairy Queen. I like, so were Mariano's and Whole Foods, two businesses that we chased after for a while to get to locate on East State Street. So I don't think we're necessarily as opposed to chains as it might seem. We might be opposed to this specific chain, but chains in general, we've done business with them before. It's worked out well for us, and I wouldn't close the door to doing so again if the result is good for Geneva. Some argument about the saturation of chains, I agree. The character of Randall Road from Orchard Road all the way down to I-90, it's just repeat the same pattern over and over again. But is that bad for Geneva? In terms of character, not so good. In terms of finance, I don't know. What determines market saturation? If a CVS wants to locate two buildings, two and a half miles away from each other, and both of those buildings do good business, and we let business determine what is saturation, I think those businessmen don't feel there are too many. Can there be too many donut shops? Look at me, I don't think so. But maybe, maybe it's possible, but the fact is, like businesses locate near each other all the time. We see it, we see it with Burger King and McDonald's. We see it with Dunkin' and Starbucks. We see it with Lowe's and Menards and Home Depot. And okay, those are all big chains, but here in Geneva, chocolate, ice cream, and beer. I think we have multiple providers of each of these necessities, all located in close proximity to each other. Would any one of them prefer to be the monopoly? Probably. But is that proximity in and of itself driving any of them out of business? I don't think that's, that's the case. There's a concept I remember hearing about when I was in grad school, economic agglomeration, and I think if I remember it correctly, the basic premise is the best place to locate is as close as possible to your nearest, your biggest competitor, if for no other reason. Then you get economies of scale. He advertises a sale. That generates foot traffic in your area, interest in what you're selling as well as what he's selling. And if you differentiate your product, as much as Fresh Donuts differentiates theirs, and you have 1,200 signatures saying, even if Dunkin' opens up, I'm going to come to Fresh Donuts, I don't know that you have a whole lot to worry about. And at the end of the day, this decision is not about Fresh Donuts. It's not, it's not a decision that says we don't like Fresh Donuts or we do like Fresh Donuts. This has to be a decision about whether or not we think a development at this site, a Dunkin' Donuts in particular at this site, is going to be good for the East State Street corridor particularly and good for Geneva generally. Is this site important enough to development of the East State Street corridor that this can serve as a catalyst for more development? You know, on that score, I'm not exactly sure. I think a lot of it depends on how it comes out from the Plan Commission and all of the review that goes into the specifics of what this site can be. But in general, if this developer can bring something to this council that we believe would be to the benefit of Geneva, should we offer incentives for that to happen? I'll hold off until I hear some more arguments, but that's really the question that we have to answer. Thanks.
Anyone else from the council, or, excuse me, the dais who has not yet spoken, wish to speak? Alderman Swanson?
I'm going to take a different tack that Alderman Maladra took on the sales tax rebate agreements. I think that makes sense that we're getting 50% of nothing if 100% of that new, that sales tax is new sales to Geneva. And if any of that sales that the Dunkin' Donuts would have is at the expense of other Geneva locations, then we're not getting the full benefit of that 50% argument. So I'm philosophically opposed to sales tax agreements. I also don't think that it's going to bode well in the future for us if we're giving away 50% of our sales tax income. We have an income problem with sales tax always threatened, and I think it's dangerous to give away any incremental increase that we could have for the sake of development. I also think that we need to follow our economic incentive policy, which we have on our website, and it states several considerations and guidelines, which, some of them I will read here. One is the opportunity does not negatively affect existing commercial development or other taxing jurisdictions. To me, that tells me that it should not negatively impact other Geneva stores. And obviously, St. Charles or Batavia, we don't want to poach business from other places, but we don't want to hurt other Geneva stores. In addition, there should be an acceptance of a recommended payback plan in case the project is incompleted or failed. To me, that is in respect to the grant. If the business, for whatever reason, is no longer operating two years down the road, should we get that $70,000 grant back for providing the incentive to build? I think yes. I think there should be a payback installed in the agreement. So for those reasons, I continue to oppose the incentive plan. Thank you.
Thank you. From the dais, Alderman Rodecky?
Thank you, and I will try to keep my comments right to the financial points. The question, I guess, is philosophically, are we going to continue to offer incentives to companies and businesses or not? And we have in the past, and we have to quite a few in the past. We have offered them to large corporations. They're on Randall Road, they're on Third Street, they're on the east side. It's a viable economic tool, and so is the TIF district. In order to qualify for a TIF district, there have to be very specific needs that have to be demonstrated and met and certified by the state that says you do in fact qualify, this is a blighted area. So this is not something that's taken without some science to it and some research about redevelopment and offering money to, incentives for companies to do business here. What troubles me a little bit about the conversation today is that we're trying to make determinations about who really qualifies for that money, and I think that's wrong. When you look at the financial, you look at the project and what we want to accomplish at a specific site, not the individual, the corporation, the franchisee, or the person that is coming in for it, I think is a mistake, and I think it's dangerous to do that. Ms. Lighten said that, you know, we all paid our way here, individually paid fully. That's not true. We have an awful lot of other people that are still benefiting from economic incentives. As a matter of fact, in that packet of bills that we paid today, that's $700 and some thousand dollars, there was a sales tax rebate going back there to the Dotson House. That goes back 14, 15 years. There's still a sales tax incentive that was put into place a long time ago to move that project along. You know, would it have been appropriate for us at that time to say, well, who's developing this? Do they have enough money? Is that private individual, you know, should we really be delving into their background and whether or not what their wherewithal is financially or how well-capitalized they are, or was it the project that we wanted to complete there? There are stores on Third Street that are still receiving economic incentives to go back years. Randall Road, we have a second turnover, a generational of businesses that have been attracted due to economic incentive. And I think if we, if we as a council decide we don't want to do that any longer, we're going to put ourselves behind the eight ball from an economic standpoint and a competitive standpoint with people up and down Randall Road and other areas. I am sensitive to a lot of the comments that were made today. However, those are the comments that are going to get flushed out in another process, not the financial process, which is what we're here to talk about today. So the simple question is, to me, are two, do we want to offer and do we think it's viable to offer economic incentives? And, you know, the second half of that is, I think it's very dangerous for us to try to determine which individuals are worthy of that based upon what their capitalization is or their wherewithal. I think you must look at the project itself and determine what our goals and objectives are and what's not being met. So with that said, I am a supporter of economic, I was not, you know, I can only base my comments to about, you know, I was a plant commissioner for a few years, I've been an alderman for 12 years. All I can do is bring that experience to making this decision. I only get one vote, one way, yea or nay. It's not a percentage vote. There are a lot of good comments made, but you have to fisher-cut bait when it comes out at the end with making the financial decision. It's been my experience, too, that we tend to over-awfulize what may happen if we do something. Most of the things that come up and brought up in conversation do not materialize, or if they do, it's never to the extent that we had predicted. That's been my experience on a very consistent basis. So based upon that, based upon the fact that I think that it is important for us to do this, to be competitive, I am in support of offering financial incentives to businesses, large or small, to help us achieve our economic goals within the city. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the dais? We have a motion, ladies and gentlemen. We have a second. In the spirit of rules of the road, six affirmative votes are required to provide the incentive package as proposed. However, no money is exchanging hands this evening should this pass, because it still has to go through the process until the entire development is fully considered. If less than six members of the council vote for this package, and it happens to be a 5-5 tie, I will vote. Mr. Clerk, whenever you're ready, sir.
Mike Bruno.
Aye.
Tara Burkhart.
Nay.
Michael Clements.
Nay.
Becky Ruby.
Aye.
Dean Kilburg.
Nay.
Craig Maladra.
Aye.
Richard Marx.
Aye.
Jean McGowan.
Aye.
Jim Rodecky.
Aye.
Robert Swanson.
Aye.
Mr. Clerk, my accounting shows six affirmative votes, four nay votes. This matter has passed.
Correct.
Moving on, ladies and gentlemen. Two. Item 12, Presentation of Ordinances, Petitions, Resolutions, and Bid Awards. Item 12A is to approve resolution number 2018-63, accepting a proposal for the purchase of certain real estate and authorizing the city administrator to negotiate the terms of the real estate contract. This requires a two-thirds vote of the corporate authorities holding office. So seven affirmative votes this evening are required. Is there a motion to put item 12A on the floor? So moved. Alderman Marx? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Maladra. Anything you wish to add, Mr. City Attorney? Nope. Questions or comments for either the city attorney and/or the city administrator and/or economic development director? Alderman Burkhart?
I thought we had some notation that took eight positive votes.
It's a typo.
Eight was a typo.
It's seven.
It's seven. Thank you.
Any questions or comments from the dais? Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Mike Bruno.
Aye.
Tara Burkhart.
Aye.
Michael Clements.
Aye.
Becky Ruby.
Aye.
Dean Kilburg.
Aye.
Craig Maladra.
Aye.
Richard Marx.
Aye.
Jean McGowan.
Aye.
Jim Rodecky.
Aye.
Robert Swanson.
Aye.
The motion passes, ladies and gentlemen, with 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero abstentions. Item 12B is to approve ordinance number 2018-22, rezoning parcel four and part of parcel five, lying westerly and southerly of parcel four, from the R6 medium-density, two and three-family residential district to the B as in boy, six-planned unit development business district. Is there a motion? So moved. Second. Bruno makes the motion, and Marx makes the second. Questions or comments for either economic development or community development? City administrator or city attorney? Any questions or comments from the audience? Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Mike Bruno.
Aye.
Tara Burkhart.
Aye.
Michael Clements.
Aye.
Becky Ruby.
Aye.
Dean Kilburg.
Aye.
Craig Maladra.
Aye.
Richard Marx.
Aye.
Jean McGowan.
Aye.
Jim Rodecky.
Aye.
Robert Swanson.
Aye.
Motion passes with 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero abstentions. Item 12C is to approve ordinance number 2018-23, rezoning parcel three, those parts of parcels two and eight lying easterly of parcel three, and part of parcel five lying easterly and northerly of parcel three, from the B2 district to the B6 planned unit development business district. Is there a motion on item 12C?
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Bruno.
Second.
Second by Alderman McGowan. Questions or comments for community development, economic development, city attorney and/or city administrator? Anyone from the audience? Seeing none, hearing none, Mr. Clerk?
Mike Bruno.
Aye.
Tara Burkhart.
Aye.
Michael Clements.
Aye.
Becky Ruby.
Aye.
Dean Kilburg.
Aye.
Craig Maladra.
Aye.
Richard Marx.
Aye.
Jean McGowan.
Aye.
Jim Rodecky.
Aye.
On item 12C, 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes, zero abstentions, the motion passes. Item 12D, as in David, is to approve ordinance number 2018-24, rezoning parcels 1, 2, 6, 7, and 8, except those parts of parcels 2 and 8 lying easterly of parcel 3, from the 12 Geneva individual, excuse me, industrial, I-2 Geneva Industrial District to the B6 Planned Unit Development Business District. Is there a motion? So moved.
Second.
Alderman Bruno makes the motion, Alderman McGowan makes the second. Questions or comments for the individuals previously referenced? Anyone from the audience? Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Mike Bruno.
Aye.
Tara Burkhart.
Aye.
Mike Clements.
Aye.
Becky Ruby.
Aye.
Dean Kilburg.
Aye.
Craig Maladra.
Aye.
Richard Marx.
Aye.
Jean McGowan.
Aye.
Jim Rodecky.
Aye.
Aye.
Robert Swanson.
Aye.
On item 12C, ten affirmative votes, zero nay votes, zero abstentions, the motion passes. Item 12D, as in David, is to approve ordinance number 2018-24, rezoning parcels one, two, six, seven, and eight, except those parts of parcels two and eight lying easterly of parcel three, from the twelve Geneva individual, excuse me, industrial, I, two, Geneva Industrial District, to the B6 planned unit development business district. Is there a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Alderman Bruno makes the motion, Alderman McGowan makes the second. Questions or comments for the individuals previously referenced? Anyone from the audience? Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Mike Bruno.
Aye.
Tara Burkhart.
Aye.
Michael Clements.
Aye.
Becky Ruby.
Aye.
Dean Kilburg.
Aye.
Craig Maladra.
Aye.
Richard Marx.
Aye.
Jean McGowan.
Aye.
Jim Merdecky.
Aye.
Robert Swanson.
Aye.
With ten affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero abstentions, item 12D is passed. Item 12D, buckle up, approval of ordinance number 2018-25, granting preliminary planned unit development, plan approval, under the B6 business district for Citron Place, including a six-unit townhome building with a shared courtyard area, sixteen single-family homes with a shared courtyard area, a three-story mixed-use building containing 5,450 square feet of retail space and twenty apartments, associated on street, excuse me, associated on-street and off-street parking spaces, and the construction of a bike path along the eastern boundary of the property connecting West State Street to Peyton Street. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Alderman McGowan?
Second.
Second by Alderman Marx? Questions or comments for community development, economic development, city attorney, or city administrator? Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, my apologies, when this first came up in front of Cow, I was unable to be here, I believe, due to illness, so I didn't get to pipe in then. I do have a question for Director de Groot, if he's available. David, the townhomes, to your recollection, as I understand it, the townhomes and the single-family homes do not have first-floor master bedrooms.
They do not.
Is that correct? Okay. So the only one-story living option or something that could be a facsimile would be the apartments above the retail on State Street?
Primarily, yes. There's also a provision that would allow accessory dwelling units on a portion of the single-family homes.
Granny pods.
So kind of a granny flat-type situation is possible on some of those units.
Thank you. That's all I had for you. The, I'm going to stand on something of a personal principle here. We have opportunity sites that are well-connected to collector highways. We know a long-term goal is to have one-story living options and density for seniors, millennials. If we can't develop this particular site behind or bordered by a busy state highway on the south, factory on the north, a strip mall on the east, I don't see how we're going to make really, truly significant progress toward our long-term goals for housing diversity. This makes some motion toward those goals, but I don't feel that this type of mix of housing really helps us too much. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the council? This is on item 12E, as in Edward. Anyone from the audience? Yes, sir. That's you, Mr. Olsson.
We've always done this in tag team.
Michael Olsson, 202 North Sixth Street.
I'm Jamie Dwyer, I'm 128 North Sixth.
Good evening, gentlemen.
We actually support this project as it is. We feel that it is a good use of the property, it is good transitional use of the property, developmental use of the property. Granted, we would love it to be a park, or we would love it to be a library, but those options are not with us anymore. But this is certainly better than so many other options that had been considered, or the continued lack of development of the property. We have spoken with the developer. They are very interested in our concerns, in making certain that there are sufficient setbacks, and all in all, I think that they've addressed, listened to us, and made changes. We followed this development as it has changed through its development, through the various committees in the city, and in general, we think this is a good plan, and we support it.
Ditto that. My comment is basically, I have lived on that corner of Sixth and Peyton for a long time. I think the development is great. However, that area has not been enhanced any way for the last thirty years. We've still got gravel driveways. Now, this is not necessarily the developer's issue, but I just wanted to bring some stuff up. One is, you're dumping a bicycle path out into a street that goes nowhere. I mean, you're dumping it out on Peyton, and past Peyton, there's nowhere for the bicycle path to connect up to. They have to divide on the other streets. It doesn't continue on. The city, years ago, I thought, had gotten some money to do the full bicycle path, but this is just a partial bicycle path. Has anybody looked at it? I mean, it's behind Burgess Norton, it's supposed to continue into Wheeler Park, it doesn't. It just stops. And it's dangerous, too. The other thing about that particular area is it's the loading docks for Burgess Norton. And almost every morning, this morning went out there, there was a semi stopped, no cars could get by at all. Now, this is something that the city and Burgess Norton probably should deal with before you put all the construction traffic on that road also. The other thing is water runoff. This project is at a higher level than all the houses on Sixth Street. Also, it's higher than the Ace Plaza. As far as I can tell, I haven't seen any drawings, and I went to look at the city's plans, I want to see what the knee walls are going to look like. I mean, there's probably a two- or three-foot drop between this development's parking lot and my backyard. What are they going to look like? Is it going to be concrete? Are they going to, you know, have to put footings in? What exactly is going to happen? And those are the details that I'm concerned about. I think the development should be great, but I do want to see the details taken seriously because this is a residential area, it's going to be impacted, no matter what goes on there. I just want to make sure that the city is on top of it. And like I said, up until now, nothing's been done. It's hard to get the grass mowed back there after that. So I'm all for the development, I just want to make sure that everybody knows what's going on back there. Thank you.
Thank you both.
Anyone else in the audience wishing to comment on the matter, 12E, as in Edward? Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, my name's Jake Finley. We're the developer of the project. Just to address some of the concerns and those comments, ten of the sixteen single families, roughly, will be able to have first-floor masters. Of the forty-six that have been done by Streetscape and other communities, three people chose first-floor masters. So to be able to offer ten of sixteen, when three of forty-five chose it, we feel like we're offering what the market wants. And additionally, obviously, the plans have been submitted, were preliminary plans. The site as it is, is, has no detention, has no storm sewer, so the, we're required to keep the water on our site. So that's all been addressed, and we've, you know, as they said, been very accommodating to the neighbors and their requests through the process. So happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jake. Anyone else in the audience regarding item 12E? From the dais, one last time? Alderman McGowan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is maybe not the most crucial point to this project, but I'm confused by the comment regarding the bike path not connecting to Wheeler Park. I've been on it many times, and it does connect, so is it just because it's not fully paved? And I'm just, like, more clarity on that, I guess.
So we've met with the Park District, we offered to continue the bike path past our site to Wheeler Park, if they use some of our impact fees to pay for it, because that's not our issue, but it's city-owned land, there's a right-of-way there, and they haven't responded. So we're happy to do that with our economies of scale while we're there on-site paving. So that was offered by us.
So you said that the Geneva Park District was contacted?
Yeah, we met with them.
And they have not, you're awaiting a response, a final response, or what is that you said?
Correct. Or a response, yeah. They were going to meet with their board.
How much time has it been? Or you said they're going to, they're meeting with their board to determine, and then they're going to get back?
Meeting with the board is June 19th, and we haven't heard anything, so. But yeah, that's the plan, there's, that's, I think, the city's ultimate plan, which we'd love to help with, we just can't afford to pay for that, it's not our property. So we offered to do it at the same time.
Okay. I mean, I've ridden my bike on that path all the way through to Wheeler, and it is a gravel path, but it still works. So there are portions of the Fox River Trail, like, towards the Q Center in St. Charles that are gravel paths, and it works for me. I guess I'm just not that particular about it, but that was all.
I think the issue there is Burgess Norton and showing that it's a bike path versus just their parking.
Oh, right. Okay, I understand that.
So, I mean, we're all in favor of it, so.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anyone else in the council? Mr. Clerk, I believe we're prepared to take a vote on item 12E, simple majority.
Mike Bruno.
Nay.
Tara Burkhart.
Aye.
Michael Clements.
Aye.
Becky Ruby.
Aye.
Dean Kilburg.
Aye.
Craig Maladra.
Aye.
Richard Marx.
Aye.
Jean McGowan.
Aye.
Jim Merdecky.
Aye.
Robert Swanson.
Aye.
With nine affirmative votes, one nay vote, zero abstentions, item 12E is approved. Item eight, excuse me, item thirteen, new business from members of the council? I know we have one person in the audience who wishes to share some new business. Anyone else? And believe it or not, folks, we're going to take a one-minute break and then continue with the next meeting, so it's going to be riveting. Let's see, Mrs. Gaines still with us? I don't know if she, yes, there she is. Mrs. Gaines, then Mrs. Roth, how's that? I don't even want to ask what that was.
It's not popcorn tonight. This is the last time that I will speak to you in my role as president of the Chamber of Commerce. I'm going to try not to be too emotional. I've worked with seven mayors during my career, many aldermen, staff members, department heads, and it's always been a positive experience. I would guess I've spent more time in those chairs than most people, and no, they have never gotten more comfortable. I wanted to express my gratitude for the friendship, and the support, and the sense that working together makes us stronger. Many programs through the years have been funded with resources from both the city and the chamber. Bridges and streets were rebuilt, studies to assist businesses were conducted, and festivals were developed and grew with our combined efforts. Thank you for your support of our goals and programs. I believe in the work of the Chamber of Commerce. I know our events make a great difference in the economy and brand Geneva as a place to live and visit. You know, often people, when they've been in a job a long time, they get a gold watch, or they get a key to the city, but I got something more valuable. I got my own wrench. This happened back when we were hauling hoses from corner to corner, when we were watering the knuckles, before there were sprinklers. And so somebody at the city decided I should have my own, and I can open any hydrant in the city of Geneva.
That explains the lack of water sales we're having, forget it.
I never misused it. We only used it to water flowers. So tonight, I want you to know that I'm turning in my wrench, and I'm turning in my 620 keys. Does anybody know that I have 620s?
Remember, you're on TV, so whatever.
So I want to thank you all. It's been a pleasure, and I'll still be around watching you. May come to city council once in a while, I bring a cushion for those chairs. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Good living. Mrs. Roth, I believe you had your hand up? Yes?
My name is Madeline Roth. I live at 520 Ray Street, and I've spoken several times before about my project, that it's not Jens Jensen-designed, it's not on the National Register, it's not the Zimmerman House, but tonight I want to add something else to the record. No federal funds were used for my project, okay? So I just want to get that on the record, because it has meaning. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the audience, under new business? Share anything, ask any questions? Otherwise, we're going to adjourn and begin our committee of the whole meeting, which will be chaired by Alderman Swanson. We're going to take a two-minute break and return in ten minutes. But, exactly. It's our motion to adjourn.
We do need to adjourn.
Yes.
Move to adjourn.
Alderman Bruno makes the motion, Alderman Burkhart makes the second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
I'd like to call the committee of the whole, Monday, July 9th, 2018, meeting to order. I am Alderman Robert Swanson, representing the Fifth Ward, along with my counterpart, Craig Maladra. First item of business, number two, approve the committee of the whole minutes from June 25th, 2018.
So moved.
Motion by Marx?
Second.
Second by Bruno. Any discussion? I believe a voice vote is sufficient there. All in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Next item of business. Passed unanimously. Item 3A, recommend suspending the rules to permit Alderman Swanson to be the Cow chairman for this meeting and to vote on all action items on this agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Bruno, seconded by Marx. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Item 3B, recommend draft resolution authorizing purchase of 2018 Ford F-550, one-ton dump and snowplow from Curry Motors in the amount of 77,955. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Marx, seconded by Bruno. Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. All in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed unanimously. Item 3F, recommend draft resolution authorizing utility easement at 945 Dunston Road. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Marx, seconded by Maladra. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed unanimously. at a cost not to exceed of $160,000 for 2018 storm sewer cleaning and televising project. Do I hear a motion? Moved by McGowan?
Second.
Seconded by Marks. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed unanimously. Item 3H, recommend draft ordinance amending Title VIII Public Ways and Property, Section 8-3 Utility Facilities and Construction to add Chapter 21 Wireless Facilities Within City Rights of Way. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Marks.
Second.
Seconded by Bruno. Any discussion? Alderman Clements?
I just have a question about this. Just curious, does this have to do with the rollout of 5G in the future?
It does, and it has to do with state legislation that passed that would limit what locals can do. So, this, if we have an ordinance in place by August 1st, we have more control over our own polls.
Thank you.
And then I also wanted to make a comment on the day as tonight. You saw there's an updated ordinance other than what was in the packet. There was one line that was added. We wanted to make sure you had that information when this comes before the City Council at the next meeting, assuming it's recommended for approval here. That language will be corrected in that copy that goes out in the next packet.
Alderman Bruno?
Uh, yes, I just wanted to acknowledge that there are aesthetic...
Yeah, we talked about, yeah, the formatting, some of it, it's a little off.
Well, no, the aesthetics within the community in terms of the historic district, and it acknowledges a different aesthetic, yeah, to the extent we can, so thank you for that.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed nine to one.
Who's nay?
Nay was Kilburg. Moving on to item 3I, discussion on City Code Title VI Police Regulations, Chapter 1 Animal Control, Section 8 Prohibited Animals Acts and Conditions, Subsection F Animals in Public Buildings and Stores. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Bruno?
Second.
Seconded by Ruby. And I think for this topic, we're going to allow the people in the audience to address us first and then the, if that would be acceptable for the aldermen.
That'd be fine.
Bye. Okay. Yes, please come up to the podium, state your name.
I'm Rebecca Zwitter. Let's like Twitter, but with a Z. I've lived on Sheffield Lane, and I'm an owner there for over 20 years. And thank you for listening to me. I'm here today to speak against any change in the city code that would allow the dogs in stores. And I look at this as a basic safety issue. My observation has been, when I'm walking on the street and I see someone walking their dog, they're very conscious that they're walking their dog, and they're very conscious when they're approaching another person. They're good about getting their dog to the side so that there's no possible interaction. There's another time when maybe you're in downtown Geneva, busy time with festivals, and someone's walking their dog, and they stop and they talk to somebody else. They're not focusing on their dog, they're visiting. That's a little bit more of a problem, because the dog is not being... They're not focusing on the dog, they're focusing on, they're socializing. Then, if you're in a store, a store is meant to distract you, to get your attention. It's a closer, more closely-held environment where there's not as much room to move around, and I see that as a potential problem. And now that I'm well into my mid-70s, I'm very aware of how careful I have to be to assure that I... You have a, you start to have agility problems, you start to have problems with muscle strength. You worry about if you bump into something, are you going to fall down? If you trip over something, is there going to be a problem? And, um, so it's just something for you to think about. I think it's a basic safety issue in stores. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience who would like to address? We'll go back in the back, right in the middle? Please state your name.
Um, I'm Kelsey Haas. I'm co-owner of The Straw Flower Shop in downtown Geneva. I think when it comes down to safety issues, what she just said, I just want to kind of point it towards it. There's children in stores, too. I've noticed so many kids jumping on sofas, having to talk to them. There's distractions. That's just life. So, I don't, I, safety decision does not concern me. We do allow animals into our store. We have. We didn't know this was a thing. We don't now. But, when we have to tell people no to come into our store, it affects us. They can't come in, they might be visiting from out of town with their dog camping, doing something else. And we say no to them, well, that kind of sucks, because we're losing money. I mean, you could potentially buy something or potentially find something in our store that's new. And I think our city streets are so nice, we have so many parks around downtown Geneva. We should be able to allow an animal come in if we so feel, because we own our store as well. It's our building. We've owned it for, I don't even want to know anymore, I think like 30-something years. My parents started it. So, I just feel like this is something that probably should have changed over the time, period. It's kind of gone on, so that's just how I feel.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Black blouse? You'll be next. Next will be the black shirt.
The black dress. Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Heidi Bijanki, and I've been a customer of the Geneva Mall since it started. And, um, I want to show a picture. Oopsie, have a malfunction here. This is my boy, Bruno. And he started shopping in Geneva Commons for the past almost 13 years. And this picture is in Victoria's Secret. And I didn't start it that. We went inside, all the girls gone crazy about him, the staff gone crazy about him. They asked me if they can took a picture of him. I said, "Why not?" So, why not? I also took a picture of him, so that's how it started. So, I want to share the experience, when I shop in the shop, all the time, it's been very welcomed. And if we talk about the safety, you have no idea, not just in Geneva Commons, but in a lot of stores. There's a couple of times I trip over little kids, because their parents also so concentrated in shopping, and they allow the kids running around the store like a playground. And sometimes some small kids just running around from nowhere, that's almost tripping. So, and then the other thing is, if talking about the responsibility, it's not just about the pet parents. Human parents can be irresponsible as well, or some individual. You can see some people, they left a coffee mark or coffee cup in the shelf. They walked past by the shelf, they knocked on something, they don't care to put it back. So, this is, we're talking about the irresponsibilities, this happens everywhere. And then I want to share one thing, which is a real event. There was a store, one of the stores they move out now. They were extremely pet-friendly. And the store manager and the staff told me, they're always happy when they see Bruno went in, because they said that not only Bruno, there's the other dogs that is the regular. And for all these years, they never have an accident caused by the dog. But they did have one accident caused by a five or six-years-old boy that pee on their couch. So, they cannot sell it because of the hygiene issues, they had to trash it. So, that's why I like, really, the dog actually behaved better than the human kids. So, this is not just for me as a consumer, it is also my experience with the store. And sometime when I went into the store by myself, the first thing they asked me is like, "Where's Bruno? Why are you coming by yourself?" So, you can see that, that is, you start having like a community that people happy. And dog, if we talk about hygiene, you know, just don't get me started. Kids or even human can be something else. So, there's a lot of things, and nowadays, that audience, over 40 years, better than, I'm sure there's a reason for that. But, for nowadays, 2018, shall we look at it a different angle? Think about it, we have police dog, fire dog, military dog. And Bruno, he's a certified therapy dog under Therapy Dog International. He went to visit nursing home for Alzheimer residents. And if according to the ordinance, maybe we break the law as well, because he's not supposed to go in, because therapy dog doesn't have the same right as service dog. Because as a handler, in my handler handbook, it's clearly stated that we don't have the same rights as a service dog, because a service dog, if I'm, I have a service dog, because that means I have a certain thing that I need help from this dog. But as a therapy dog, I bring the dog in, I'm just his handler to bring happiness to other people. So, and then if you look at the world, we're just moving to a more positive direction. Just Illinois, starting from this year, 2018, the law has changed. If a couple, they're going to divorce, the pet will be treated as a human kid. So, the judge, if the couple, they want to fight for the custody of the pet, the judge has to base on the well-being of the pet. So, that's they treat as a family member, it's not animal, they're family members. And then you look at the airport, more and more airport, they're bringing dogs to unstress the traveler and the staff. It started in 2001 in the St. Jose International Airport after the tragic event of 9/11. So, they bring, they started the program to bring in to help the traveler and even the employee in the airport. And by last year, the whole America has 48 permanent program. And this, I'm talking about permanent program, let alone there's other optional that, or some are still trying. And Chicago itself, it started with United. And then Ohio, a couple of years ago, they decided to bring in dog. So, if you're talking about allergies to dog, don't you think the airport may have more people allergic to dog than the mall? But then you have an option. I myself have allergy, my allergy is even worse, I have food allergies. I'm allergic to, I know it's funny, kind of like tuna salad sandwich. I didn't know that. I found out in a way that hard way, I was in the ER. So, compared to the allergies to dog, which my best friend has. You know, we all, life is not fair, each one of us may have something. But, we take responsibility of our own health, our own body. So, if I'm allergic to something, I walk away from it. But I'm not entitled to take away the right of other people to enjoy it. My job, I have to go to lots of events and conferences, I cannot stop people and tell them, "Don't order the tuna fish sandwich." If I saw it, what I'm going to do? I walk away from it, I have something else. So, it's all about the democracy, the choice, the freedom you can choose. Something you don't like or you don't enjoy doesn't mean that you have the right to take away other people to enjoy it. So, that's what I want to say, and thank you for the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am, could you spell your last name for me, please?
Bijanki, B as in boy, I, J, A, N, K, I.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gentlemen in the black shirt.
When we met last, and I just wanted to reiterate, I think what we're looking for is for businesses to be able to make, and property owners, to be able to make their own decisions with respect to this. So, um, business-friendly means businesses are allowed choices, and they can make those choices for or against, so that's...
Thank you.
Nate, sir, can you just give your name for the record, please?
Yeah, Joe Spitza. S.P.I.T.Z.A. And my wife and I own Wet Nose in Geneva Commons.
Thought I saw a hand on the south side.
Just very quickly, this is really not anything big, new and different. My name is Susan Kingsfield. I have been in the towns of Fisher Farms, which is right behind the mall, for 16 years. And I am on my second Boston Terrier at this location. My current Boston is now, just turned 10 last week. And we have consistently shopped at the mall for the 16 years that we've been there and been very welcomed into many of the stores, well, any of the ones we've gone into. And, um, I know we can't go into Barnes &amp; Noble, apparently because of the Starbucks in there, and I would have gone into there and shopped. But Chloe, my little Boston, has, she just can't wait to go. She loves it. She goes and she sits up and she waits for her treat at Hallmark. And, and just, this has become a part of our lives. It gives us a purpose, a direction, a destination. And I put my credit card in my back pocket and we go. And that's certainly business for the mall that they wouldn't have if I couldn't do that, because I wouldn't do it as often, so thank you.
Thank you. Yes, please.
Hi, everyone. Mayor Alderman. My name is Lisette, and I am actually from the town of Montgomery. I don't live in Geneva, but I do come to Geneva all the time. I'm here in support of Joe and Sheila. I come to Wet Nose all the time with my dog. A little background, I have a three, a six-year-old retired racing greyhound named Dakota. I spend a lot of time and energy and money to train her to become a certified therapy dog. We come to Geneva, we come to greenfields, we come to different schools and nursing homes and whatnot to do visits and provide that service. And I do my shopping when I'm in Geneva, and I have always been so happy that everyone is so welcoming, it's been so pet-friendly. I can, I can bring my dog into the stores, do my shopping, and for me, more importantly, have her safe versus sitting in a hot car, which I would never do. So, if I am not able to bring her with me into the store, I would inevitably just go home and do my shopping elsewhere. Many towns are pet-friendly now, as previously stated. You know, dogs provide, it's been proven that dogs are therapeutic. And I understand that there are concerns as far as safety, I understand there's concerns as far as allergies. But I'm talking about well-behaved dogs that are able to shop with their owners who are responsible and watching for them. People who are exposed to allergies, different kinds, peanut allergies, seasonal allergies, pollen, mold, dust, all kinds of allergies. I feel like anytime you leave your home, you're at a risk for that or encountering that. And I think that as a community, everyone can share the space equally and have respect for each other. And the businesses should have a choice whether their clients can come in and shop with their pets and do so safely. So, I'm just here to urge you guys to consider an amendment that can kind of include a little bit of everybody. And I would personally enjoy coming, continue to come to Geneva and do my shopping here. It's always been a great town, so that's all.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, please.
My name's Kelly Saltzman. I would just like to say I agree with what's been said. Pets are part of our families these days, and it's important that we treat them as part of our family. I know, I don't like to leave my dog on the weekend. I work all week, she's home by herself. I like her to spend time with me on the weekends. So, I do take her shopping. We come to town, we go to Commons, we go to the concerts at Commons. People are very aware of their dogs, and they try not to invade on other people's face. We're respectful of the shop owners. And I think people, other people like, come up to me and say, "Oh, can I pet your dog?" People enjoy seeing a dog out and about on the town, and Geneva's always been pet-friendly, and I hope it stays that way.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, sir.
Hello, everybody. My name is Michael Tennis. Just listening to everybody talk, here's a couple of comments I've had. I made comments a couple of weeks ago, basically going to reiterate that, is I'm all for businesses like Wet Nose allowing pets. So, I really don't see the point of just not making a small amendment to this ordinance rather than kind of making this broad stroke across it and who knows, opening what can of worms. And the point on behaved dogs or animals or pets, sometimes I think the owners are a little fooled by if their animal is well-behaved or not. Not all, there's plenty of well-behaved animals out there, but I don't necessarily always think they're using their better judgment because they love their animal, and they're going to look on the brighter side of it, I guess, so, but that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, please.
My name is Cynthia Husky. I'm here from St. Charles. And I'd just like to say that I'm in favor of allowing the businesses to decide whether the animals should be allowed in there. A lot of people are talking about the responsibility of pet owners, and I personally, my own experience, because we have so many more restrictions, I feel like pet owners are very responsible. Like, we walk our two dogs down Third Street every single weekend. There's never like poop on the floor, everybody steps to the side when we're walking, if they have a dog that's not properly socialized. I see a lot more children, like, running crazy, like, a lot of them run up to my dogs without even asking if the dog is friendly or not. And I just feel like we should be... And I just feel like we should be given the same opportunity with the dogs that everybody else gets, because for some people, their dogs are their family. And like, for me personally, I'm, I'm not planning to have children, these are my children. And it's just very important for me, and we moved to St. Charles because we really wanted to be close to Geneva. We knew it was pet-friendly, and we're right on the border, and we're always in Geneva shopping, we go to Wet Nose, we love it. And for some reason, they don't let Wet Nose allow dogs in there, move to St. Charles, because a lot of people love you guys over there, so.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Hi, my name is Paul Elson, and I'm extremely nervous. We've been going to Wet Nose for about a year, and our dog is about a year and a half old, sorry. And we've been training him in Geneva at the Commons to be a therapy dog, sorry. And it would be kind of detrimental if we weren't allowed to go over there and let him enjoy going into Wet Nose, because he loves the place. And when we do down Third Street and stuff, a lot of the kids come up and ask if they can pet him, and we make him sit down, and he's in training, and he does, and he's just an awesome dog, and I'd hate to lose it, sorry. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Kathy Charhut, and I'm the property manager at Geneva Commons, and I would just like to urge you to change the ordinance so that the stores will have the option to let pets come once again to our stores. I know that the majority of our customers really enjoy that, and I think the majority of people in Geneva enjoy taking their pets all over Geneva, and I don't want them to not be able to take them into the stores at Geneva Commons, if those stores do so choose to allow them. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, given the late hour, I think perhaps it would be best if the council discussed this matter, so we can perhaps get a resolution tonight, unless there's anyone that really wants to make a comment. I'd like to open it up to the city council.
Sure, ma'am.
I, I do have a letter from a resident that they would like read. Is that a good time to do it now, before we start a discussion?
That'll be fine, with the public comment would be perfect.
Yeah, okay, that, that's what I thought.
Brief letter would be great.
Well, I promised I'd read it, I'll read it as quickly as possible. Our names are Mr. and Mrs. Michael Tennis, and we are residents of Ward 2. We are writing to you so that our voices may be heard regarding the possible change of the ordinance regarding pets being permitted in stores. Upon watching the city council meeting of June 18th, 2018, we do have concerns and additional questions brought to the council from Mrs. Spitzer. We do agree that the ordinance should be amended to include those businesses that are pet-based, such as Mrs. Spitzer's store, Wet Nose. We do not agree that allowing pets in stores and restaurants simply because an owner wants to shop, to shop with an animal. Trained service animals are not the issue. They are highly-trained animals, are meant to aid their owner, and are very needed for that person. This is a necessity. An individual simply wanting to shop with their pets is not a necessity. Most pets simply do not have the training needed to deal with the public or other animals. One example we have, one example we have experienced with, with a pet being in a store on State Street in the heart of the town is this. We visited a local store, upon entering the store, the employee's pet came from behind the desk and jumped on me. I am highly allergic and do carry allergy medicine, but shouldn't have to take it just to shop in a store that is not meant for pets. The dog did knock me back, and my husband intervened. The owner said to me, "I must not be a pet lover." I said back to her that I'm allergic and didn't like that. We left. We should have not, we should not have to be worried about being jumped on, licked, or barked at when shopping. Allergies are, are, are concern, but what about the concern of those individuals that are very frightened of animals, especially large dogs? I understand that I am encountering service animal being in a store, but these animals are trained not to approach the individuals. It is easy to distance myself from one or two occasional service animals. It would not be so easy to distance myself from many animals, per se, in a single store. Mrs. Spitzer does bring a point about the support of brick-and-mortar stores. However, her customer gain because a pet is allowed, the customer may also be lost because a pet is allowed. Case in point, that business, the business that lost our sale. At the writing of this letter, Alderman Berghardt created a poll on Facebook asking for input on this matter. According to what was, what we are reading, the response does seem to favor leaving the ordinance as is, but adding pet-based stores to the list of pet groomers, vet clinics, kennels, et cetera, where pets are allowed. We believe this to be a good compromise. Our question is this, how will allowing stores to choose if they will be pet-friendly benefit the health and safety of the public? We feel the original ordinance was put in place to keep the public safe. We thank you for taking this moment to read our concerns and for sharing them with the members of the city council. Thank you. As quickly as possible.
City clerk, how forward is that?
I got it.
Alderman Kilburg.
I have an amendment here to the ordinance. I would move amending police regulation, Geneva Code of Ordinances 6-1-8 subsection F. It'd be written and read as follows, this is subsection F in the ordinance. Animals in public buildings and stores, it is unlawful for any animal, even though on a leash, to be in or enter any public building, food establishment, or any store except a retail pet store, kennel, veterinary clinic, or pet grooming parlor. This section shall not apply to guide dogs for the blind or hearing impaired, support dogs or persons with disabilities when, with their masters, or for professionally-trained law enforcement and guard dogs. This section shall not apply as well to any business that is legally registered and licensed with the city and properly displaying the official city pet-friendly sticker designation. The sticker or designation must be current with the city and visibly displayed in a prominent area at the entrance of the business. This way, people will know that the store is either pet-friendly or not pet-friendly. It will allow police to know if there's an issue, are they registered, can the pet be in the store legally? This would apply then, and it would also educate shoppers that if this is a pet-friendly store, they may not want to enter if they have an allergy. This way, there's a, there's a designation in place, and it will educate the community as to what stores allow and may not allow pets. Also, this way, we have some level of control over it, and we've got the same indicator to let people know at each store whether or not it is or isn't pet-friendly. It's, it becomes a standardized symbol of, of whether or not pets are allowed or, or not allowed. I think that, I think there needs to be some organization. Plus, the other thing is, is that this doesn't place an additional burden on businesses that don't want pets to enter. Right now, there's a lot of businesses in Geneva that may not want businesses, or want pets to enter their business, and one way or another, they're going to have to make a decision whether or not they post pet-friendly or not pet-friendly. This way, they can leave their, their signage as is, those stores that want to be pet-friendly, they can go to City Hall, and, and we'll work out the specifics, but some type of a decal or designation then would indicate that this is a store that you can enter and you'll be welcomed. Is there a second?
City attorney, would that, would that be an acceptable motion to?
Well, it hasn't been seconded, certainly the mo, the, him, yeah. Certainly the motion is, is in order. The, the propriety of a new license, frankly, is what the Alderman's speaking of, because I don't think every business in Geneva has a license. There are certain businesses that are licensed, and a whole slew that are not, and so what you would be offering...
No, 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 I'm just simply saying, as it relates to pets specifically...
Which would be a new license. You would be, you would be requiring a new regulatory scheme to require some type of signature, some type of insignia on, on businesses, which would require some type of license or permit. I mean, you're, you're talking about a new regulation, essentially. So certainly it's in order. The question is, is the bodies, is that the bodies, you know, wish and determination?
Any other discussion? We have a motion by Kilburg and a second by Radecki.
Yeah, I, I think most of us, you know, we want to keep this as simple as possible, and yet achieve what we think is a reasonable compromise with it, as always. However, there are some unintended consequences, and I think Craig brought them up, is we don't want to put shop owners to approach this from a negative standpoint, they have to be the one that says, "No, you can't bring the dog in here." I think, I think the intent behind what Alderman Kilburg is trying to do is to facilitate that, to be sure that we lessen that impact, so, you know, as far as calling it licensing and regulatory and enforcement and things like that, I think we're looking, I think we're just looking to achieve a simpler way to make this approach from a positive standpoint for those involved, rather than a negative standpoint. That's one point I wanted to make. The other one, and I wrote to the city attorney about this, and he got back to me, and just to be clear, too, and we've had some discussion, is, you know, it's really the landlord that makes the decision as to whether or not they're pet-friendly, and they, they can take care of that with their lease arrangement with, with their tenants. You know, I had a question that, you know, should we just remove this ordinance now? Are there landlords out there that are, that have a detrimental reliance, that their tenants do not have pets in their stores, they didn't ask for extra security deposit, they didn't ask for extra rent to cover any potential exposure? You know, would they be able to, if we remove this ordinance now, would they have recourse to be able to go back and reach an agreement midterm in their lease with their, and you give your, you know...
Here, the prohibition, and to be clear, the, the village has, the city has a ban, and in the absence of a written reinforcing provision, I, I'm old enough to remember when there were certain stores that said, "No shirt, no shoes, no service." So that was certainly a rule of engagement, that business determined was minimal requirements to, to go into the store. I suspect most commercial leases has a series of regulatory requirements between the tenant and its landlord. If there isn't a prohibition in the lease, I am certain that a commercially discussed and bargained-for lease has a reach-back or renegotiation provision that still maintains a landlord, landlord's right to control the property. So do I think that's likely to be the case? I do, Alderman.
Okay, thank you. That, that was the one question I had, because we are, seem to be, you know, focusing a lot on the, on the tenant and the shopkeeper, but I do think the landlord, you know, we have to consider that that's the one that's really being affected by this, so, thank you.
Alderman Bruno, and then Malandra.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Couple of points. My whole goal here has been just to leave this as a business decision by the business owner in conjunction with the property owner. I, I'd wish the ordinance hadn't been in there, because if it didn't exist, those constraints by landlords would, would be baked into everything now. You know, we have in front of us, which gets to my second point, what we have in front of us is to vote on striking it, so...
No, that's not, that's not correct. What we have in front of us right now is a motion by Kilburg to, to modify...
Right, so the point of order, because that, we had a motion to modify last time, and that got kind of complicated.
It did get complicated.
The topic right now is discussion of, and the motion on the table is, is Alderman Kilburg.
So the, while I appreciate the, the end goal of Alderman Kilburg's motion, I think it, the, the city is still too involved with licensing and official stickers that I, I would, my goal would be to just cut the city out of, out of this, or to amend the ordinance such that anyone who wants out of it can get out of it, and we're done with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Malandra.
I think I agree with Mike. I appreciate the intent of what Alderman Kilburg is trying to do. As Alderman Radecki said, we're, we're looking to do, we're looking to come up with a compromise here that enables those stores who choose to be pet-friendly to do so, but does not require the stores who do not choose to be pet-friendly to do anything. So I like the idea of, of rewording the existing code as opposed to striking it completely. I don't like the idea of licensing, because it requires us to establish a new business process, a new section of code under licensing and things like that, it sort of complicates things, so you could reword it to just say that it doesn't apply to any business that displays a sticker indicating the pet-friendly nature of the store. To the point about tenants and landlords, they've got to still work it out with their landlord, what they do, there's nothing that we would do that would put the landlord at a disadvantage in that case. It's also nothing that we would do that would require any business today to do anything if they don't want to allow pets in the store. So I appreciate where Dean's going, I just think it's a little bit too far, and if we could scale back, I would support that.
Alderman Kilburg.
Simply strike and license then, but you got to pick up your sticker somewhere, and wouldn't it be helpful to, wouldn't it be helpful to know which stores are pet-friendly? Wouldn't the city like to know which are or aren't? Absolutely, but how they post their pet-friendliness, doesn't have to be a uniform sticker, it could be like a... Well, don't you believe, though, that it wouldn't be helpful to the shoppers? Absolutely. If you saw a green sticker, and as you're walking down the street, if you saw a green sticker from, let's say, 50 feet away, you know, well, that's a pet-friendly store. Rather than to walk up and all of a sudden, in a little corner, it might say... Under the hours. What? Under the hours. Yeah, I'm just saying, I think that, I think we owe, owe it, I think it's a responsibility to the shopper, I think to the pet owner, to, to do something to standardize it so that it's easily identifiable, and that everybody has a quick Leo, gain a, a good understanding that this is, this is how Geneva operates, and I can go into that store, there's a green label, or a dog smiling, or whatever, but, you know, I, you know, I don't want to create a lot of bureaucracy here, but I think it would be helpful to the city and our police department to know which are, which aren't, and through a registration process where they come in, fill out a form, and pick up their sticker. I mean, I don't think that's real complicated, and I think a lot of the business owners would find that to be acceptable. Does anybody find that to be unacceptable? I'm just asking the question, if anybody has a comment. I mean, I think this, I mean, we've got to find some type of resolution, I think this is a starting point.
With all due respect, I think we're over-complicating the issue, truly, I truly, truly do. I, I, I heard somebody say about the no shirt, no shoes, no service, maybe at the last meeting when I watched it on TV. It's pretty simple, I'm a business owner, somebody comes in, and they have a dog, and I don't want them in, I just say, "Oh, I'm so sorry, we don't allow dogs in." You know, if I lose that customer, I lose that customer. It'd be no different if somebody came in and they were covered in shit, I don't know, and I, I don't want them in my store, I'd be like, "Excuse me, you stink, you need to get out."
That's a dramatic example.
It is, but, but my point is, is that I don't think that we, I just think we're over-complicating it, you know, to try and regulate it, and I mean, how do you know that a store's going to, I'm a new store, I'm coming to Geneva, and I want to have dogs come in my store, who's telling me that I have that option, and I have to go to the village and get a sticker, fill out an application? Can't they just do something as simple as put a water bowl outside my door and say, "Come on in"? I just, you know, I look at other communities, I look at other states, they don't overcomplicate it. You know, if you're a business and you don't want dogs in, just tell them, "Hey, I'm sorry, but we don't allow dogs in."
Can I interrupt?
Yeah, please, please.
I'm thinking of the situation, though, and I'm, you're right, we're probably overthinking this, and over-awfulizing most things, like I said, we tend to do, but we, we just remove the language and say, "The ordinance is, is rescinded, we have nothing in there." And I bring my 120-pound Irish wolfhound into a shop, and the guy says, "Don't want that dog in here." I said, "Well, what, what ordinance do you rely upon that for? The city allows me to bring the dog in, and there's no restriction for me bringing my dog."
No, he owns the business, he can tell, he can tell, he can refuse service. It's no different than if you're a bar and you're inebriated, they can kick you out.
Well, that's against the law.
Well, true, but, I mean, point being is that they can not serve you any longer.
That, your, your example, Alderman, remember, there's a prohibition in place, the propriety and the policy driver at that time, maybe someone here knows, but removing the prohibition does not make it invert, all of a sudden saying, "There is an absolute right to do what you as a customer want." The owner of the business and the landlord still have rights to their property, those are private endeavors. And to the comments made, they may drive someone away, you, you and your rottweiler will... someone away. You, you and your rottweiler will not return. That's the business owner's problem then.
Okay, yeah, good, okay. Thank you.
But if I may...
Yes.
So, I agree that the licensing and the application and all that stuff is overly complicating, but I don't see a difference between the over-complication of requiring an owner to put up a sticker saying pets not allowed than it is to require somebody to put up a sign that says pets are allowed. Somebody's got to put up a sign...
Why?
No matter what.
Why is that? I guess that's my question. Why do you...
Just make it simpler. Like, I agree with Dean. It's easier to state before you even come in the door that I don't want the dog here. Or also, right now, they don't have to do anything. There is no specific action required by a store that doesn't want pets right now. So, what we're proposing when we just remove this is we require specific action on the part of the owner.
No.
Yes, you either have to say, don't bring the dog in here, or you put up a sign saying...
No, you, Alderman, you don't. That's for the business owner to decide as someone comes through in real time.
Right.
She can tell someone, I don't want dogs, we don't accept dogs here.
That's specific action.
Right, but that's what a business owner does when someone walks in without shoes on. Hey, we don't serve people without shoes.
Apparently, they don't have to do that.
Only because the city didn't put in a provision that says that you, you can't shop without shoes. If the city had that provision, you would be then saying, there needs to be a sign saying, shoes must be worn.
Okay, as I was saying, if somebody's putting up a sign, I didn't see it as being overly complicated. That's...
I mean, I get that point, but...
Whether it's a sign saying no or a sign saying yes, there's still some sort of invitation or bar to the action being taken by somebody. That's all.
I'm going to interrupt the conversation right now, and I need consensus from everyone to continue this conversation past 10 o'clock.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Get this done.
Should we continue on? Okay, let's continue on.
Is everybody done with me?
We're this close.
Alderman Ruby.
I do think that this is getting really overcomplicated, and just a quick Google search. I'm curious for any of you who take your dogs everywhere. You can look online, there are websites, rover.com, BringFido, BarkPost. You, you can look online to see where dogs are allowed. So, I would think if you live in a town, you're going to know where your dog is welcome, as everyone here has spoken to. And if you're visiting a town and you have your dog with you, I think that you're going to plan in advance and know where you're going to go, so your dog doesn't end up, you know, stuck in your car or other poor circumstance. So, is, is there a, is there a more popular website that you guys use? Yeah.
We have been with our dog, uh...
Can you come up?
... four states, and have never had an issue going anywhere with them. You, you know where you're going to go. You're not going to go into a deli with your dog.
Sure.
You just know. And people with dogs are mindful, and they're progressive, and it's like Geneva is a progressive town. That's why we moved here, and we hope, well, we're on the right way, but we don't need to complicate it. And the, like Noble Wren, they're, they have food there, and they have a dog bowl out front.
Sure.
You know you're not going to walk in there, but you know what? They're sweet. They like animals. They have a dog bowl. But we have never had any issues taking our dog anywhere, even on the ferry to Mackinac, you know? They welcome, but you just do that. And no town has ever not, you see welcome pet-friendly signs, but as a rule, no, there aren't.
So, so the issue of whether or not a dog is allowed in a business isn't really an issue for the dog owner?
Not at all. Hinsdale, there's, there's, there, no, it's not an issue.
Okay.
None, no.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Alderman Burkhardt.
I guess I'm thinking of this from the point of the people with the allergies, the people with the kids who are scared of dogs, that, I mean, I heard from hundreds of people who said, don't, a lot of people said, I love my dog. I don't want to take my dog shopping. Or my kid has allergies, or I have allergies. And I, I'm in favor of allowing it up to store owners, but I really would like to see some kind of notification. But I, I don't know if, I like Alderman Kilburg's idea. I don't know if that takes it too far. I was hoping someplace like Wet Nose would volunteer and say, hey, we'll make up 200, you know, ex, ex, you know, Xeroxda signs, pet-friendly.
We wouldn't be able to for...
People could pay you five bucks a pop and come in and get their sign, and...
In our very first meeting, we did say that we provide stickers for all the stores in Geneva Commons. So, we do do that.
And what are those? Were they small or big?
Small round stickers, but in all fairness, there are some stores that are corporate won't let them put stickers on their doors, so they just don't have them on there.
Yes, you should be at the microphone. I, I think we need to encapsulate this conversation and move forward. We have a motion on the table, and, and I think perhaps we ought to be able to vote on it, and if the vote fails, we can continue the conversation with a, a second alternative.
So, since she's before the microphone, could she quickly, small stickers, corporate...
So, what we did is we provided just little round stickers, they're two inches round, have a little paw print, it says pet-friendly on it, simple. And we provided them for free to all the retailers that wanted to participate. They don't say Wet Nose on them, they don't say Geneva Commons on them. But I do know that there were some stores that are pet-friendly, but they can't put a sticker on their door because their corporate lease does not allow that. But they do promote themselves as being pet-friendly. They're on our website, they're on Geneva Commons website, they're on our sheet that we hand out. They just can't put the sticker on the door. So...
I, I would be in favor of something like that, where there would be some kind of voluntary effort of a sticker, of sign, of whatever, to allow the shoppers who just choose, I don't want to go in that store. If there's been pets in there, that's not my thing. And, and each business owner would make that decision and kind of be transparent about it. So, thank you.
Can I just say something else? The problems related to this code are even less than incidental. This hasn't been a problem in any way, shape, or form. Striking the code, not striking the code, it's the same as it's always been, you know? And as a business owner, we have a right to do business with whoever we want or whoever we don't want. But there, we're making a lot of issue over something that's been one complaint in 16 years or one of four. It just doesn't, it doesn't seem to warrant all this, as opposed to just a simple, you know, in my opinion, a simple strike of the code.
And, and I also think, you know, when you were talking about the ordinance earlier about the issue with the donut shop, right? And everyone kept talking about the charm of Geneva and the, the community of Geneva, and just the, the way that it, the feel of it. And I think that pet-friendly fits into that whole thing. So, okay, I'm done.
Thank you. Alderman Clements.
Thank you, Chairman. First of all, I feel a little uncomfortable, like we're almost now trying to shift the bigger burden on them by saying, you're responsible for organically growing a sticker movement for the entire community. So, I think we need to be careful with that. And I also, I would like some clarification maybe from the city attorney. I think the proposed amendment from Alderman Kilburg says something about eating establishments or whatnot. And I've gotten lots of emails from people saying things about eating establishments. Is it correct that the state does not allow for pets in restaurants or outside of them, unless it's a city of a million people, and...
It does, and there's also county provisions as well with respect to health and, and services with, with respect to restaurants and, and food service.
Okay.
So, there are regulations that, that preempt local rulemaking with respect to that as it is.
Okay, so as far as we are concerned, we have no control over...
By the way, Alderman, the exemption being service pets, obviously, and pets for, with respective disabilities. So, those are the exemptions, but yes.
So, we will not affect what happens at a restaurant or eatery, or, okay. So, I just want to make that clear, too, because I've been getting a lot of emails from people who are either for or against having their pets, and they are assuming that if we do this, they'll be able to take them into restaurants, you know? So, I just wanted to get that out there and be clear so that I understood as well. And lastly, just with regards to stickers, and I get why we'd want police to know that there are pets in a store or dogs allowed in a store, but I don't have a sticker at home. I have two hound dogs at home, and, you know, I'm sure the police might like me to have a sticker on my house, but I don't know if that really is, is a big issue. You know, they have to deal with going into homes all the time, probably not knowing if there's a, a dog in there or not. So, anyway, if we do vote on this, I'd also like to hear this amendment again, because it seems it's changing around even on the fly as we've been talking. So, thank you.
Alderman McGowan.
Thank you. We're still discussing the motion on the table, which is the one that Alderman Kilburg asked. So, a motion to call the question.
Second.
Second.
Would you reread your motion?
Sure. Animals in public buildings and stores, it is unlawful for any animal, even though on a leash, to be in or enter any public building, food establishment, or any store except a retail pet store, kennel, veterinary clinic, or pet grooming parlor. This section shall not apply to guide dogs for the blind or hearing impaired. Support dogs for persons with disabilities when with their masters or for professionally trained law enforcement and guard dogs. This section shall not apply as well to any business that is registered with the city and properly displaying the official city pet-friendly sticker or designation. The sticker designation must be current with the city and visibly displayed in a prominent area at the entrance to the business. You know, this is something potentially...
I don't believe we're allowed to discuss it after calling the question. It's time to take a roll call vote. Clerk, please.
We have a second, right?
Yes. Second was Rodecky.
Yes.
Mike Bruno.
Nay. What is the motion exactly?
Motion to amend.
As read by Kilburg.
Okay, thank you.
And he, he will provide it to you.
Tara Burkhardt.
Nay.
Michael Clements.
Nay.
Becky Ruby.
Nay.
Dean Kilburg.
I guess I got to vote for it. Aye.
Craig Maladra.
Nay.
Richard Marx.
Nay.
Dean McGowan.
Nay.
Chairman Rodecky.
Sorry, Dean, nay.
Robert Swanson.
Nay. Okay, the motion failed. Continuing the conversation, Alderman Bruno.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to make the motion to amend the existing ordinance by extending the last sentence to include, or if the business owner and property owner elects to permit domestic animals of their choosing.
You would, you would want both to require, both the lessor and the property owner?
That would, there would be nothing that would require us to check it. If someone challenged it, the business owner would have to demonstrate that they've, if, if the property owner didn't want it, they would have to...
Can you reread that, Alderman?
Sure. How about I just reread, like, the, the last whole sentence?
The last language you would add on.
Okay, the, the last language I would add on, which follows a, a section about the exceptions that would allow animals.
So, prohibition stays, and then it has exceptions, and then you're adding language at the end.
Right, and that is, quote, "Or if the business owner and property owner elects to permit domestic animals of their choosing."
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Maladra. Any conversation? Alderman McGowan.
Thank you, Chairman Swanson. I just want to, I haven't given my comments on this issue yet. I do have them, but I just want to delete the ordinance from our code. So, I'm not sure if this would be a good time to elaborate on my reasons for wanting to do so, but I can certainly wait. But, but because of, because I want to simplify this as much as possible, I want our city code to, I believe our city code should reflect the way that residents, visitors, and business owners alike have currently been living the past few decades and possibly longer in this town, which is that we are a pet-friendly town. I feel that the current code is unnecessary and just, just doesn't reflect how our little segment of society has been living. So, because of that, I would not be in favor of Alderman Bruno's amendment. I just think that we should delete this code, or this segment of the code.
Right now, we have Alderman Bruno's amendment, and it's seconded. I share your opinion, and I think what we could do is vote on this amendment, and if that fails, you make the next amendment, which would be what you just said. That would be my suggestion. Well, right now, the motion is Bruno's adding verbiage, and if that were to fail, I think you could make us another motion. Yes, Alderman Bruno.
I add commentary to, to my, to my motion. The intent of this is because the ordinance has existed for so many years, there could be an assumption, there could be an interpretation that by removing it, we are, that there is a positive action by businesses to deny pets. As I said, I wish it didn't exist to begin with. This effectively neuters the entire ordinance, which is a great pun.
Second, second to the rule.
This effectively neuters it to any business that wants it, cuts the city out of it. It, it allows the business owner and landlord to make that agreement if they want it, cities out of it.
The only problem I have is it's complicating it with you have both the business owner and the landowner.
But that's not on, on us to police.
And, and why, why be involved in it at all?
Well, because it truly is the, the property owner that truly has that decision, which, which should...
Put that verbiage in their own lease.
Which should, which should be baked into the lease. It's been brought up that potentially some property owners don't have that on the presumption. Again, we are way over-awfulizing this whole thing.
Do we have any other comments on Alderman Bruno's amendment?
Chairman, not for me, but we do have a member of the audience that wanted to speak.
I just thought it through myself.
Okay, gotcha.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm sorry, didn't see that. Alderman Rodecky.
I guess I, I am in favor of, of just putting some sort of a very brief verbiage. I think Mike is close. I would not be in support of simply removing it for the fact that, as Alderman Burkhardt said, there are an awful lot of people that, you know, still think that, that there should not be pets, and with, they won't go to stores that they have pets. I, I think it acknowledges both sides of the issue, because I think there are two sides. People that we're here from are very passionate about their pets, and they came out today, and I appreciate that. But there's a, there's an awful lot of folks on the other side. For that simple fact, you know, I think we, it's not appropriate just to abandon all verbiage or reference to it, but to clarify it to give choice. So, I think what Alderman Bruno is proposing is certainly on the, on the right track. I don't know about the verbiage with landlord and such, if that can be cleaned up, but I would prefer to have something than just remove it, but keep it as simple as possible, too. Thank you.
Any other comments? Alderman McGowan.
I guess call the question. I motion to call the question, please.
Clerk, please take the, the roll.
Is there a second?
There was a second, my Maladra.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, to call the question? Do we have to second it?
Or a show of hands, or anything?
I'll second it.
Yeah, let's do it.
What? What are we voting on?
This is on the Bruno amendment.
I know. What, could somebody read it to us?
Please reread, okay.
Okay, so who's seconded?
Maladra.
Okay, originally, okay. Mike Bruno.
Aye.
Point, point of clarification, could somebody please read, read the, the amendment so that we know what we're voting on?
The, the amendment would be precisely extending the final sentence of the ordinance, which is the exceptions to, to the ordinance, to include, quote, "Or if the business owner and property owner elects to permit domestic animals of their choosing."
What's domestic, who determines?
Question's been called. There, there's no conversation. That, that is the amendment that is being voted on right now. Clerk, please take the roll.
Okay, Mike Bruno.
Aye.
Tara Burkhardt.
Nay.
Mike Clements.
Nay.
Becky Ruby.
Nay.
Dean Kilburg.
Nay.
Craig Maladra.
Aye.
Richard Marx.
Aye.
Jean McGowan.
Nay.
Chairman Rodecky.
Aye.
Robert Swanson.
Nay.
Continuing the discussion, Alderman McGowan.
Thank you, Chairman Swanson. I just wanted to share my viewpoint. I've, first of all, received many, many, many emails in my inbox. You could say, you could say my inbox is flooded over the last week or so with messages from people who were very upset that the city is essentially discussing upholding this ban that is in the books, that is banning pets in businesses and public places, or public, I guess, public buildings, too. So, I did hear from maybe one or two people who do not like having pets in stores, but that was completely outweighed... that was completely outweighed by the messages I received from people who are in favor of continuing to bring their pets with them shopping. And I heard from people who travel here from towns an hour away, and they've been coming to places such as the Commons or on Third Street with their pets. And so people from near and far already kind of think of Geneva as a destination that is pet friendly. So I have a couple different thoughts here, and I will try to make them organized, but please bear with me if they're not. I have a sign on my house that says, no solicitors allowed. I made it myself. If you have pen and paper and you know how to read and write, you can make a sign saying, pets allowed, or no pets, please. It's as simple as that. It's free and easy. So, secondly, some stores have signs that say, no bills larger than a 50. That's another thing, that a business owner can just decide to do a simple sign is all it takes. Easy and done. Now, moving on to some more.
Are you making a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry, no, I'm not making a motion. I thought we were discussing the original...
Well, we were, but...
We're still in the discussion.
I'm trying to move, I'm trying to move on the conversation, so...
This is the discussion, but I haven't had a chance to talk yet, so I'll, I know, I'll try to wrap it up. I know it's late.
I'll be questioning twice on two other amendments, though, so...
Just to clarify, though, there is currently no motion on the floor.
Correct, correct.
Right.
No, but I don't know, so that, you're saying the original motion isn't there at all?
Original discussion.
Okay, but there's no motion.
We don't revert back to the original motion once the amendments are both...
It started out as discussion, and both motions have failed.
Are we back to discussion?
We are in discussion.
Okay, that's what my understanding was. So I'm sorry if I said something other than that.
No, no. But if you would make a motion, that would be great, too.
Well, I just want to get some thoughts out before I do, and then I'll try to make a motion, so. But I've been pretty quiet all night, so this is my time. So there's a program at the, again, these are, you know, no particular order. There's a program at the Geneva Library right next door, Reading to Rover. I took my kids to it when they were younger. Children who are learning to read sit with a dog, and they read aloud to the dog. It's therapeutic. I did hear back from Christine Lazarus, who's the Geneva Library Director, and I said, what does this ordinance mean to you, the existing ordinance in our city code? Would the Reading to Rover program continue? You have live dogs there that are therapy dogs, but they're not service animals. And her reply was that they would not be allowed to continue having dogs for that program. That's a public building. So that's just something for people to be aware of. And that is one of the reasons why I think we should just eliminate this particular section from our city code, just to, as I said earlier a little while ago, just to reflect, so that our code will reflect the way that people have been, have already been living here in Geneva for decades as a pet friendly town. So, please bear with me for one moment. I think there's a lot of fear-driven conversation here this evening. People are assuming that there's going to be gross abuse of this if we get rid of the existing official ordinance, and there's going to be, you know, chaos and mess pandemonium. I really don't think that's the case. First of all, people are innocent until proven guilty. Let's give people a chance. I myself have a dog. I live right by the Commons. I go to the Commons a lot. I go to downtown a lot. Sometimes I bring my pet with me into a store, not always, usually I don't, but I do like having that option. I do take my dog to Wet Nose, and I like having him with me. I have no plans whatsoever to increase the frequency of which I bring my dog to a store or public place, just because this, you know, hypothetically would take out this ordinance, which is what I would like to see. So I know I'm just one person, but I have no plan whatsoever to all of a sudden, oh, now I'm going to bring my dog with me every place I go to because I can. And I really don't think that's going to be the case with anyone else for that matter. So I think what we're seeing now, what we've been experiencing in this city the last few decades, with the level and the frequency of pets and the types of pets being brought into stores and public places, I don't think that that is going to automatically skyrocket as far as frequency. I think it'll probably be maybe a little bit more, but it's not going to be a noticeable difference. And then, as I said a few weeks ago, when we were first discussing this here, in all of the years, I've lived across the street from the Commons, and I just, I mention that because I live very close to the Commons and Randall, and I go there a lot because it's convenient for me. It's very, very rare to actually see a pet in any of those stores except for Wet Nose. So I really don't think that this has been, I guess, for lack of better words, a bad situation for Geneva. I think it's fine. I think people are happy. And I would like to make a motion to just remove the section of the city code. It was six dash one dash eight, section F, if I'm not mistaken. And so that is my motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Alderman Ruby.
Just a question. So are we back to the original motion?
No, this is a, this is the first time this has been motioned. It started out as a discussion.
Okay.
This is what was proposed two weeks ago.
Gotcha. Okay, yep, thank you.
Okay, so then, yes, we are back to that. Any questions or other questions from the dais? We have a question from the audience.
With respect to public buildings and public places, if you don't have this ordinance, then they can bring it in, the animal in, without a leash? Where does it say that they can bring it in without a leash? If you can just bring it in, and what will you do with the swimming pools?
Any other questions from the dais or from the audience? Yes, sir.
Back to the leash thing. It is a leash...
There is a leash, yes, there is.
Correct? That's what I thought. That applies to the owners of the stores, too. If they have their pet in there, it should be on a leash as well, right? But it's on, no? That would be like your house, then? I, I'm answering frankly off the cuff. So I will look it up, but I do not believe that's required of a business owner if their own domesticated animal is in their store. It's like their home. There's no leash requirement in that instance, but I will confirm that information. That's why I asked, because I was thinking along those lines. Then, kind of along those lines as well, is there an ordinance for how many pets you can have? Is there going to, would there, is there an ordinance that would apply to how many pets are allowed in a business? That would be just as many as you want? Okay. We're getting hypothetical, unhypothetical. I assume there are fire requirements for how many people can be in a certain space. If there's, if there's nothing but animals in a store, there's no business being taken place, so I don't think that's going to happen. But I would assume the business owner would have some discretion in determining traffic in general, but also with respect to the number of pets in the store. Okay, because I was just thinking along the lines of if the business owner doesn't, isn't required to have a leash, kind of like a resident, would they have to follow the same residence rules as far as how many pets go? But we're not sure, or it's kind of up in the air, there's nothing as far as we know.
The code doesn't address that. The code addresses the number of dogs or cats within an apartment or other dwelling unit.
Okay.
So it's a dwelling unit would be considered residential.
Okay. What's that number, just out of curiosity?
Sure, the code is Article, sorry, Title VI, Chapter 1. That's the whole, there's, there's a bunch of different provisions in there. That specific one is, what did I tell you?
Four. Four?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Just along the lines of the Reading to Rover thing, that would also exclude therapy dogs from visiting nursing homes. And I think a lot of those seniors get a lot of enjoyment from those dogs, that they would not be allowed to come there anymore.
Alderman Burkhardt.
Quickly, I'm in favor of leaving it up to the store owners and property owners, but I would like to see some kind of notification to families that have allergies or, you know, frightened, frightened of pets, that it is a pet friendly business. So I'll be voting no on this because it doesn't include that. I understand we were, got too far into the weeds and couldn't seem to find our way out, but, you know, I do, I'm in favor of stores making it up, deciding for themselves, but I really do wish that they would, or I hope that even if this passes, that they do find a way to somehow let the public know that pets are off and on the premises. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion on that's been seconded. Are we prepared to vote on it?
Yes.
Okay, Mike Bruno.
Aye.
Tara Burkhardt.
Nay.
Mike Clements.
Aye.
Becky Ruby.
Aye.
Dean Kilburg.
Nay.
Craig Maladra.
It's not what I like, but I'll support it. Aye.
Richard Marx.
Nay.
Jean McGowan.
Aye.
Chairman Rodecky.
Nay.
Robert Swanson.
Aye.
That's a six to four approval of the final motion, which was to strike the pet ban. This is a, this is a committee of the whole meeting, so that we'll have final approval at next week's city council meeting, so that is not a final decision.
Possibly.
Possibly, thank you. Moving on to number four, new business public comment. Does anyone have any new business? We've addressed the public comment piece.
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.[1779.63]